For the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, with the love of the Lord.
Welcome to Half Moon Bay on a beautiful foggy day. We have our planning commission meeting for August 8th, 2017. So, we need to start with a roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Demond? Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Vice Chair Holt?
Here.
And Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
Thank you. All commissioners are present.
The next thing we have is the approval of minutes. So first we'll cover the July 11th meeting. Do you have any comments on the minutes from July 11th? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Moved.
Hang on a second?
Second.
Okay. Just a vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain, I was not here on the 11th.
Correct.
Same thing for 7:25, any comments on the July 25th meeting?
I move we approve the July 25th minutes.
Second.
And I will abstain because I was not present.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, let's move on to public comment. So, for those of you who have public comments not on an item on the agenda, you have an opportunity to submit a green card. If you haven't already done so, you can also make public comments. Do we have any other public comments? So, Mr. Steinberg, would you like to address us on your public comment? And I've received your written notice as well. Please make sure the green light is on.
Jerry Steinberg, 591 Terrace Avenue, Half Moon Bay. I was just may comment on the minutes that were sent out. Included a letter from a person that indicated that there had been two fatalities at Terrace Avenue and Highway 1. We've lived there 20 years and haven't seen anything. So I did go down to the highway department and asked them to run a check. And you'll see in your package that you have, Attachment A is a report that indicates no fatalities at Terrace in the last 10 years. You can go 20 years if you wanted to, but the highway department will really look at what's happening in five or 10. Second item attachment, in the San Mateo, the settlement agreement indicates that the widening of Highway 1 and the light at Terrace cannot occur without the approval of Caltrans. And this would be true whether the settlement agreement existed or didn't exist. You have to get Caltrans approval. Attachment B in your package is Resolution C-1607, which indicates that the city has signed off the idea that a light would not, they wouldn't consider even consider putting the light in until they've issued the occupancy, the certificate of occupancy for the 63rd home. This is still in existence. So, in the letter that was on the minutes indicated that it had to be put in. It had to be put in right now. Not true. Attachment number C is an indication of a biological report. There's two pages here. One of them is the one that was done in the EIR, which indicates that there's wetlands in the median and also on Beechwood, which would be in the 100-foot buffer zone. So what the city has to do essentially is do a delineation of the wetlands, this is 2017, to determine how they would mitigate the wetlands. So, the highway department is not going to, is kind of held back by sort of that. And also, this is an old one that actually Mike Ferrer gave me. This was a combination of a number of studies that showed the wetlands and the buffer zones on Beechwood, which again would impact the widening of the highway. And the last, what's happening now is, you folks had reviewed a fence that went in around Alianto's property. And that fence, and there's a 66 megabyte, 589-page report from the coastal commission, including a lot of your things. On the internet, you can read it for yourself. I've included about four pages in Attachment D. And the reason I did was that the folks on the upper part of Silver are really intent. They've been very sincere about trying to help the students go into the high school through the back door. So they've actually allowed them now, not waiting for the fence to come down, to pass through their property and go on to the high school. So that, what's happened is there's traffic created on Terrace of these people driving up their car, driving their cars not just from living in the area, but from the coast and dropping the kids off. And that's probably an increase. Maybe that's a good idea. Maybe the neighborhood should be a school neighborhood. And, but what that would mean is that the city has to consider, and there's an urban legend on Silver Avenue, not for a light, but for a right turn only in, so that people could come in on the road, make a right turn, go up to that area, and then come back out Terrace. So, the idea is that, what's holding everything back is, a lot of this stuff was submitted as a peer review, a project engineering evaluation report, which is a shortcut way to try to get approval from Caltrans. But, there's a limit of $3.5 million on the allowance of using a peer review. And also, it's not supposed to be controversial. The problem is, is that the estimate for the light and the widening of the $2.5 million was given in 2007. And also, there's a path that's been added on the east side now. So, I'm sure it's over $3 million, three and a half, four million. There's plenty of money available because not only is there $2.5 million from Alianto, but the city has obtained a grant from the San Mateo Transit Authority for an additional $3.5 million. So, there's money to do the work. It's just that you have to submit it properly. And I can't understand why, I mean, it's going to require an EIR, and I just don't understand why that isn't being done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I welcome our new attorney to her second meeting of Planning Commission. This is an item that I'll just note for your record has been going on for a while, is evidenced by a settlement agreement. So it's probably an item worth digging into. And it might make sense for the speaker to talk to you offline about it as well and give you some perspective on it. But it's something we've heard many times in Planning Commission meetings. Okay. No other public comments? I'm going to thank you for your comments, Mr. Steinberg. I'm going to close the public comment. And we're going to move on to the first and only public hearing item tonight. So, we have a local coastal land use plan, coastal access and recreation. So we're going to continue the review of this chapter and look at the Planning Commission's working draft of the local land use plan. Jill, would you like to take it away?
Thank you. We're going to jump right in and make sure we get to comments. This is about our fourth session discussing this working draft. The intention for tonight's session is to complete the Planning Commission's first round of input on this coastal access working draft. An overview of our session will be followed by a few highlights of significant themes and ideas that we've noticed in the input and that we've been discussing through the previous meetings. Steph also wanted to pose a few clarifications. And of course, we know that the Planning Commission has their own topics from input that you've given us in writing. And we know that you're prepared to discuss those. So, we attempted to anticipate what some of those may be to give you a little bit of information in the record here in case you need things to reference. Okay, so, this is where we are right now. The June working draft represents a version with the G-PAC's input incorporated to the extent that we could. And the step we're on now is to incorporate the Planning Commission's input. Next steps will be to review with our city attorney. And we have technical consultants as well as coordinate with coastal commission staff. And then come back to you with a revised document showing how it was changed and how your comments were treated. Also want to remind everybody, because it's really important and this is going to come up over and over again, we're paying attention to the consistency of the entire local coastal land use plan while we go, even though we can only take one chapter at a time. And that will be done again later when the general plan elements go through. And so everyone is going to be patient about iteration because that's going to happen as these topics touch each other. Remembering, this started quite a long time ago. There were guiding principles in 2014. And in fact, of the six, three are pretty closely related to coastal access and rec. And so they remain relevant. So jumping right in now into significant themes and ideas that we've been batting around and want to focus some of your discussion time on those where we feel we have some loose ends. So the first two, the east side parallel trail was full G-PAC consensus. And we also had planning commission consensus at the June, I think it was 27th session. So I'm not planning to discuss that. We feel the public has provided significant support to this concept. And we outlined a lot of criteria about it. And it seems consistent and quite stable. Parkland standard, I'm not planning to present that at all. We've talked about it many times. We know that there's differences of opinion about it. So, we're looking for the Planning Commission to bring it up if you're interested in that. We do want to talk about the town boulevard concept tonight. It does have G-PAC consensus. It also had Planning Commission consensus. But we'll get into that in a little bit. And then, the very important topic of relationship to coastal resources because that comes up over and over again in this particular chapter. Town boulevard. So this is what we presented back in June, in a nutshell. This really came right out of the G-PAC's statements to make it safe for all modes. We're talking about Highway 1 and also about Highway 92 now, based on Planning Commission input, Highway 92 between Highway 1 and the city limits. The idea of lowering the design speed and actual speed, enhancing the aesthetics. And the focus area for the G-PAC was north to south Maine. We would like to hear if that's still within the realm of what the commission's interested in. Since the June session, we've looked through the input that we've received. And there's still a range of things that we think we need a little more clarity about. Specifically, the interest of maintaining capacity of the roadway relative to its actual scale, pace, character. We heard a couple commissioners mention road diet at the June session. Road diet is really about taking lanes out, so making the road smaller. We also discussed and showed multiple examples of Caltrans highways that go through other towns throughout the state where design exceptions were approved. They're related to complete streets policy and context sensitive design that Caltrans, both of those are things that Caltrans must do. And so, we found some inspiration that these other communities were able to accomplish some more of customizing of these highways. Also of note, there will be environmental review following this work. So regardless of what is chosen tonight or the direction you're giving us, if you're concerned about the performance of this type of a scenario, it will be modeled. There will be study of it and probably more than one option. It also doesn't, this is not about getting down to the design nets. We're at a policy level and we want to stay there. But that said, a little more detail and a sense of consensus would help us from the Planning Commission. That other big topic, which is where we have natural resources so often very, very close to coastal access points and coastal recreation opportunities. The one in particular that we'd like your direction about is this first one, the concept for the Half Moon Bay Vista Walking Trail. And talk about it on the next slide. But also the Pillar of Cedar's Creek Trail, any of the creekside trails, coastal access points through or adjacent to habitat. Those occur in many places between the First Public Street and the Coastal Trail, for example, or from a parking lot to the Coastal Trail. The east side parallel trail, although it has so much support, it actually is likely going to touch on some habitat areas. And we don't want to forget about our human habitat while we're going through this. So, just so folks have this concept when we get to talking about the Vista Trail, a lot of people wanted to see what's actually happening at Pacific Ridge. This Vista Trail concept is not specifically about Pacific Ridge, but Pacific Ridge gives us a lot of context for what's going on on the hill. On this slide, that light green color to the northwest is considered Area A. It's an open space area. It is protected habitat. It's actually fenced off. And you can see, this actually is a map with wetlands mapped on it. The lavender color is Area B. It is also an open space area. But it is going to be open for some public access. You can see the subdivision below that. The NTS, if we all need to know, that's not to scale. This is Jill's Trail that I bluffed into the drawing. But Scott Phillips assures me it's pretty darn close. So this was part of the settlement agreement, was a public trail. What's really great about this is it provides for a loop, which I think people really enjoy. It will cling to basically Upper Terrace until it gets to the last house. And then it will become more of a path going up the hill. There's a bit of grade there and there should be some view. The black line is the city limits. So we just want to give a little bit of context about what's, at least on this part of the hill. North of here, I don't have this kind of quality graphics, but I think it gets you some context. All right. Clarifications that staff just wants to share with you. We're going to talk about a few definitions that we'd like to add to the document. Talk about-
Hi Jill, can I just back up a second? And go to what we're going to refer to as Jill's Trail for quite a while now? If you could go back one. This is, this is a concept? Or is this actually spelt out roughly in this area? This is actually agreed upon? While it may not be to scale, is it already agreed upon?
This is agreed upon. This is actually in the final map that's being reviewed. It's in construction documents. My location of it is a little fuzzy. But this is what's being reviewed at City Hall. And you're welcome to come and see that.
And is there an expectation that you're going to connect the north to south, the bits that aren't gold, you know, so that it's actually a full-on loop? Is that going to be part of the eventual design?
It's touching back down to a sidewalk. So that gap is just a different kind of walkway. It's not a trail.
Okay. So where the black line is right now, you're not expecting to put in a sidewalk going north to south?
I'm not sure we're talking about the same black line, so I just want to make sure.
The westernmost black line?
Oh, the city limit line?
There's, if you go to the edge of the existing development, there's a black line that's the border. Is that, is that where, like, are you going to go north to south? Are you going to connect that sidewalk?
Hold on.
We don't have to go through it now?
No, I just want to make sure. I can happily show you after. Oh, you think it's that?
Yeah.
Oh. No. Thank you.
Right there.
Ah-huh, okay.
The reason for my question is there's a historical trail that runs along that black line. It's been fenced off.
Yep.
And it connects those communities together. So that was the, where it was going with that.
I see. I see. It's not part of the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Continue? Okay. All right. So we're going to look at a few definitions and a couple other clarifications and try to get it back over to you quickly. We noticed, and a couple folks from the public noticed this as well, we make references to complete streets in the document, but the definition is actually in the circulation element. And since we're not bringing them together, we really think we need to put the definition in this document as well. We also feel that the public record has, including from the G-PAC, has informed us that a complete streets definition needs to be much more sensitive to the context of neighborhoods than the one that's in the circulation element. It's a, the definition of circulation element's rather standard. And we have a lot more nuance and differentiation from neighborhood to neighborhood, traffic calming, maintenance of drainage facilities and improvements to them, et cetera, et cetera. All needs to be considered as well as retention of historic trees and other kinds of landmark features. We also noticed we don't have a definition of uplands. There is no definition in the existing LUP. I can't find one in the Coastal Act. I can't find one in three or four coastal programs that I've looked at. And I've been poking around. We found one in a coastal commission wetlands document, but it was all relative to wetlands and not relative to bluff. So we have some work to do. And we think it's important because, as one commissioner noted, this is going to be dynamic as we have bluff retreat. And it affects recreation and access. At your last session, the joint session with the Parks Commission, it came up just different flavors of recreation and really and truly what is active, what is passive? What is this idea of low impact? We might not want to come up with really hard definitions here, but at least some, kind of a menu, a bit of, some examples. And if you have others that you think are missing, we'd like to hear about that. We still have the intention of the definitions that will be provided for this LUP policy document will be in a glossary that will also be applicable to the general plan when it comes forward and vice versa. We're trying to play out of the same rules to the extent that we can in terms of what things mean. So we're thinking about that as well with respect, for example, to the circulation element. Okay. This policy, we've got some input from commissioners, but we would love a little discussion about this. Coastal Act Policy 30220 is about water-oriented activities. In fact, they call them certain water-oriented activities. We would like a little more input on what it means for Half Moon Bay to implement this Coastal Act Policy. The coastal area is suited for water-oriented recreational activities that cannot readily be provided. At inland water areas shall be protected for such uses. So that is, that's the Coastal Act Policy. So our questions, and I think Mindy Craig, our consultant, brought this up a little bit at our last session. We want to confirm without limiting it too much, but confirm the general direction of what Half Moon Bay's protected water-oriented uses are. It seems to us that they are, from the input we're getting, that there tend to be human-powered water recreation. And then, we intend to work with our attorney and policy advisors to learn a bit more about what, oops, I misspelled that. That should be protection, not projection, protection. What does protection mean? What would the city's obligation be to maintain these activities? Are they to be prioritized over other goals? For example, shoreline armaring or not? And how do we, how do we deal with that in our policies? There's a section in the document about coastal access points. Four are listed. Three of them are pretty big changes. And so we'd like to differentiate those from the others. A new access point at Wave Crest, a revamped Poplar access, and improved access at Surfers Beach. Then there's some that maybe thought of as, at least right now, they look like smaller changes, although possibly they could become more tenuous if they're left for too long. But we see that there's quite a few access points between the Miramar neighborhood, the Casa del Mar neighborhood, and the state beaches in between to the Coastal Trail. This map highlights just a few. I think you can see the little paths. I know there's, in Miramar, there's a little boardwalk even between the First Public Street and the trail. There's a little bit of challenge, I think, right now getting down from Venice. We've already identified Wave as an option. There's some other opportunities in Casa del Mar. There may be some trails, some points south of here, but because Kelly and Poplar are so strong, I didn't focus on Arleta Park. But if you want to bring that in, that would be great. Yep. I will continue. There was good intention, which has a really unfortunate policy. Policy number six, about the siting and design of parking at coastal access points. I think the consultants were really intent on bringing forward as much of the 93 policy as possible. And I was really not aware at the time how much of it was actually already implemented. This policy includes references to the actual number of parking stalls that the city was supposed to add. I think it was 1,000 as a whole. And then, it also included limits on the size of individual parking facilities, et cetera. From a staff perspective, we would really recommend having as few numbers like that as possible in a policy document. But certainly, we'd want that in an implementation tool. But it seems to us that these ideas are still valid. The concept of, of course, having distributed facilities, that's actually Coastal Act policy. So we need to, we need to do that. Studying parking demand from time to time, taking care about how big the facilities are. There's aesthetic issues. There's new functionalities that are shown in some of the policies for parking facilities. Multimodal linkages, for example, transit stops, bike sharing, and things like that, that we really don't have planned into any of the parking facilities right now. So, there's a lot more to siting and design of parking at coastal access points than how many stalls. So, we would just encourage this kind of approach. And if you could help us with that, we'd appreciate it. This, this idea, we just had a few more things. These are a few more ideas that did not get into the document. Mostly because staff did not want to really deviate from where we were with the G-PAC. And some of these things hadn't really come up before. This one came from Mindy Craig, our consultant from last time. The concept is that, could we charge for special events that are conducted on the beach? The intent is to not close the beach for a wedding. It would be still open to the public, but to charge for that wedding because there's maintenance associated with having more people come and whatever kind of prep or cleanup is required. And so this pyramid idea where the absolute most use would be for beach and park access for everybody at the low- and park access for everybody at the lowest cost, and then climbing up a rung to self-selecting people choosing recreation programs like they already do, and they pay a little bit to do those, they're very reasonable, and then moving up and, and charging a bit more for those more selective events. So that was a policy that she, um, brought out at the last session. I'm not sure the discussion really happened about that, and we didn't bring language. If you're interested in us drafting something for that, we will. And there were a few others. This one I really would encourage. It takes a long time to implement certain kinds of things here, and it, and it should. But sometimes while we're waiting to get through processes, it can be really nice, for example, with a traffic calming project, or, um, some kind of a, a, a different configuration for parking to have a pilot program, something that's just in paint. And give it a try. And of course, it would need a CDP, and, uh, if it, if it qualified for that, if it's exempt, it's exempt. But to allow a little bit of experimentation in, um, this access concept is, I have experience with it, I think it's, it's kinda great because you get very direct feedback, and you can then better refine, um, construction plans later. Another one, the long-term approach to the coastal trail alignment, that is in your document. It's, um, it comes up, um, in other parts of the LUP. We, you know, the city is actively studying how to, um, how far to and, and why and when to pull the coastal trail back in the city-owned section from Kelly to Seymour, but we really didn't talk about it very specifically elsewhere. And every time I go down it, um, by the state parks, I wonder why we're looking over the parking lot and the trail isn't next to the beach. So I don't know if this is something you're interested in the long term, but there's going to need to be planning in the future to move those parking lots back. They're going to have to retreat, they're going to have to be reconfigured as these bluffs erode, and there could be an opportunity to, um, make a different choice about where the trail is located. I don't know if you're interested in that at all. That's just something I wanted to, um, throw out there. And then we already talked about this at the last session. We recognize that there are exemptions for, uh, different kinds of repair and replacement projects, like the bench for a bench, that I think we talked about last time. I think the city staff has been pretty conservative about their approach to that, and, um, I think that's great, but if we had some policy that perhaps gave a little, um, guidance for that, they may be able to more confidently know when they're in an exemption zone versus not. And so we, we would like to suggest something for that. And that's staff's look at, um, the input you've given us, the input we've received from the community, um, the big, the big topics we hope you can talk about tonight. We have time for Planning Commission clarifying questions, as we usually do. We'd have a community input period, um, Planning Commission discussion and, and direction. And in fact, we, we hope you can queue that up with your own topics, things that we haven't covered, that you wanna make sure to share with your peers. And then we've listed the others that, um, we would especially like a little feedback about. Thank you.
Jill, I have a question, a clarification. On the slide where you're looking at the green pyramid, the beach and park access, is, is the question, should we be charging a nominal amount for beach and park access? Like, parks, like what's, what does the single dollar sign indicate in your?
It's trying to represent the existing condition.
That's how it is today?
Yeah. Low, low cost, which it's supposed to be for the Coastal Act, um, and that it's available to as many people as possible.
And, and by park access, you don't mean parking, you mean actual park?
Um, we're talking about, uh, city parks, um, here, as well as state parks, any, any of the rec. Maybe we should've said recreation access. But really, the only, um, piece of that graphic that would be new is the, well, special events triangle.
Okay, thank you. So before we open it up for public comments, do my fellow commissioners have questions for staff? I see.
Of course we do.
Benjamin, Dr. Benjamin recently.
So, um, thank you. So I wanna go, so lots of interesting comments and a very thoughtful set of ideas to stimulate our conversation. With respect to clarification of low impact, when I was, uh, reading your slide and hearing your thoughts, it, it reminded me of, uh, a comment that we often have seen with respect to, uh, our use of SEQA, or difficulty we've had with SEQA, which is the dearth of thresholds of significance. And I wonder if your thinking is that these definitions of impact would dovetail with levels of significance, if that's your shared community point of view, or if you mean a different nuance than the SEQA threshold of significance?
I missed the very first part of your statement. So could you do it again, I'm sorry?
So you had a slide going back.
Where is it?
I'm, I'm sorry, it was, uh, you were asking for clarification on what were low-impact, recreational uses. Maybe it was low-impact, I'll find the slide.
There it is. Okay, if, yes.
Right. Low-impact recreation.
I'm with you now.
And my question was, you know, when I think about the dimensions of impact, um, one way of modeling thinking about this, not necessarily the right one, but one way of thinking about it is if, if we were trying, if we weren't thinking about recreation, and we were just thinking about, you know, environment with a capital E, not just sensitive habitat, but just our environment, the way SEQA regulates it. You know, there's a notion in SEQA that says we analyze, uh, you know, we can simplify our analysis of impacts by defining thresholds of, of significance for various types of impact. And my question was, when you think about low-impact in this context, does this dovetail with your thinking about what SEQA thresholds of significance should be? Or is, is this a, uh, a new area that we just haven't thought about that we need to explore?
I'm thinking about it now. I hadn't thought about it. I think we were, um, using, um, kind of common language that had been batted around the room at the last session. This certainly could go that way. We, we were trying to define things that would be, um, so for example, and this could go with SEQA, uh, not active sports fields, not lit fields, and all, all those kinds of things actually would probably trip SEQA review. So it can.
So maybe.
Yeah.
Then, um, with respect to, um, the, you had a slide about protected, um, marine water activity. I don't remember the exact language. Thank you. And I, so I'm just trying to get, so in my mind, when I think about that, and I just wanna see if I am understanding your thinking, something like surfing or kayak, you know, surf kayaking, or you call them human-powered activities, as opposed to a wave runner. Those are, those would be protected activities. There's a level of energy there. And it's not that the, that the powered activities don't require, you know, if you wanna crash the wave on your wave runner, you need a wave, but there may be other reasons. For example, the Gulf of Fairlance Marine Sanctuary restrictions that might limit, um, these other activities. So I'm just trying to put a context so that it doesn't seem quite so arbitrary. Also, um, there are activities that are not the water, but they're, they're thought of often as beach, and the one that comes to mind is beach volleyball. And I think of that as being an instance of something that's, that uses the beach resource of sand, but the, but the sand doesn't have to be at the beach, if you follow me. So, um, I wanna be sure I understand that when you're thinking about those activities, it's really tightly linked to water, because that's the text of the Coastal Act policy that you're describing. Is that right? Okay, good. And, uh, when we talk about protecting that activity, as opposed to projection, like you said, that was, that's good. Protection means that we're not gonna allow some other use there, but did you also envision, or did you specifically not envision, that in order to facilitate that, we would maybe say that it's our policy that we should have or should not have seawalls, or should, or should not have groynes or vetements, or something like that? What, when you say protect, I wanna be sure I understand what you mean. I think you don't mean to do those things.
We meant to, um, ask you about that because, and, and also our, our legal counsel, because if we're going to define some of these protected water-oriented uses, we wanna understand what the city's obligation is to maintain them in the long term, and if that has unintended consequences, which could be armoring or things like that.
Okay, so I have, I'll have comments on those. The question was just to see what you were thinking, but I'll come back.
That's.
If I don't speak to that, please remind me to. And then with respect for, uh, charging for events on the beach, um, is it, the focus of the charges are not you're renting the beach, they're, we incur costs for, uh, being able to recover it? And is it only for events that would, at least for a portion of the beach, exclude other people from using the beach in that limited area? Or, I guess I'm still a little fuzzy on the concept of what kind of event at the beach gets charged, or could be charged?
Our, uh, understanding is that we would never, um, permit an activity, really, that would close the beach, and that would be a very extraordinary thing. We're talking about incidental things that probably are already happening, that the city has to deal with and has no revenue stream to support. So the, the wedding party, different kinds of, uh, maybe some, some kinds of sporting events, but they would not close the beach. People could still traverse the beach.
So an example of an activity that kind of closes access to the beach would be the Maverick Surf Championship. You know, it's hard to go in that water anyway, but it's, you know, when it's big waves and they're doing that stuff, you don't get to go on the beach. You know, the junior lifeguard activity I see during the summer on the beach, you know, they're there. I'm not sure what impact, if any, their presence has to the city, so I'm trying to figure out if that's the kind of event that we're thinking about. So at some point, I'm hoping my fellow commissioners or staff or the public can give me an idea about what those events are. And, you know, at some point, we need clarification about what kind of events the Coastal Act would actually allow us to charge, um, because I have concerns that it may not. Then you, you mentioned that you were looking for policies that allowed, uh, pilot project flexibility, and I wanted to understand what, if you could give me an example of an area of the existing canon of policies that prohibits the kind of flexibility you might like to do? Not that, not that you're advocating, that you have a particular pilot axe to grind, but what are you thinking about?
I'm not sure that they're prohibited. I just, I would suggest it'd be nice if they were encouraged.
I see.
Yep.
And then there was, you wanted clarification on exemptions, same slide. And I know that there are, um, there are sections of the Coastal Commission regulations, right? 13252, 13253, 13251, that lay out some places where, uh, the exemption, there are exceptions to the exemption. The language is sort of obtuse. And there are parts of our current local coastal program that lay out some exemptions. For example, the like-for-like. And given your earlier comments about trying to leave some of the specifics and let them sort of be the subject of the implementation plan, to give you the kind of feedback you want for this level of policy, can you help me understand what kind of, what's appropriate for this LCP policy-level conversation about what like-for-like might mean, or other kinds of exemptions that aren't the subject of 13251, 2 and 3, or those LCP policies?
Sure.
Actually, I think they're zoning ordinance, not LCP policies.
You know, that's probably right. We had feedback from our consultant who had interviewed quite a few groups who were frustrated by the permit process that we were putting them through. And I don't know all of the detail on that, so I'm happy to go dig that back up. But I'm looking for, um, sort of supportive clarification for simplifying certain kinds of things. For example, Shakespeare in the Park, if there's a way to do that correctly this year that doesn't change much, um, can we keep doing that?
Very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Those are my clarifying questions.
Thank you. Brian?
I just had a question. You talked about some of the potential realignment of the coastal trail and some of the parking along the bluffs there, and I'm assuming you're referring to some of the areas that are within state parks jurisdiction. Can you speak just generally kind of how, um, this plan relates to state park lands, and to what degree it might guide or direct future state park activities?
So I would see it as collaborative. State parks does have to get CDPs, and, um, I would, I'm, you know, we're anticipating, following the removal of the Ranger House, um, as well as the state parks currently being active, looking at how to deal with the coastal trail, which is, uh, north of that section towards, um, Marotta Road, um, understanding they, they need to realign it, they need to bring it inland. That, and, and in fact, we've, we're on the record with them in, in writing over that emergency CDP, that we really need to be working on a long-term strategy for retreat. So I see it as very collaborative.
So we can set some goals. It doesn't necessarily bind the state parks, but, you know, hopefully they'd work with us in sort of achieving those goals.
Right. And I would like to think we, you know, there'd be a range of alternatives that, that folks can take a look at, and a proper planning process. Yep.
That was my big question right there.
John?
So, um, either to our chair or, or to Jill, um, you, you've laid out some concepts and some ideas and some discussion, and wanting recommendations, so is, what's the format that we do that? Do we, do we, kind of, up, up to this point in our meetings, we've only individually made suggestions, and, and we don't necessarily have consensus? So what, how does, what do we do tonight for that?
When you're done with your, um, questions at this point, we, we wanna make sure we have public forum, because that will inform your discussion. I would suggest, and, and the chair and I talked about this yesterday, and I think you'll have a better sense in, in the session as to which way you wanna go. I would suggest either starting, um, with individual planning commissioners, going one by one, and putting into the discussion forum any other topics that you feel are not resolved, that staff didn't bring up, that aren't on this list, that you really want to make sure, um, you get that input made. Or start with these, um, few on the bottom here, in particular, the Town Boulevard item, because we do want to resolve some, some, a little bit of tension that we're seeing in some of the input. So one way or the other, we, we hope to get through the, the pieces here that, um, we're, we're seeking clarification on, and we think some of those actually we have comments from commissioners about, or going the other way.
But my, my question is, do we agree as a commission, the recommendations or the suggestions, or?
I, I, I think that, um, historically, we've had a discussion, and on many items, consensus may emerge, but what I'd like to see is, um, the full opinion on these items. So my suggestion is to Jill's point, if there's anything missing from the list, let's enumerate that first. Hey, you forgot, how do we preserve the actual beach frontage that we have today, for example? Like, that's an item that I'd wanna put on the list. What, what policies do we have in place to make sure that we actually have a beach in 50 years? 50 years? Things like that. And then, what I'd like to do is go through each of the bullet points, one by one, and just have a discussion focusing on the Town Boulevard, because that's the most important one, but that, that would be my recommended approach, that works for you guys. So, we can just logically see if there is consensus or not, and if there's not, that's okay, but you at least know, like, where we're at. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
The chair. So, you know, where we can be unanimous, that's wonderful. Where we can't, I think it's okay to count noses, you know, and, you know, we're not gods. This is still going to the city council and the Coastal Commission, and, you know, we, we often agree to disagree sometimes, and we can do it again tonight. So, you know, it's great to try to see if we can get unanimous, but I hope we don't get here till midnight trying to persuade one another. So, I hope you'll keep us on track if we're not going.
I'd be really disappointed in you if you'd keep me here till midnight. All right. Duly noted. We'll, we'll count noses where we can, but I don't think we need to make motions for any individual item. Did you have any other comments or questions about the presentation? Les? The, the, sort of, I just had a couple of quick items, just points of clarification. I guess one item that I saw missing was the long-term protection of the beach. There are a lot of general policies that speak about habitat restoration, but as I read through the documentation as a whole, there's no, there's nothing that really guides us to protect the existing beaches. We talked about bluff tops and whatnot, but that's kind of a, as we're thinking about things from a 50-year perspective, it'd be nice if we had a surfer's beach in five years, let alone 50, so that was just one item. I think those are the, that was the only point of clarification that I really had from, from that, so. Okay, so with that, we do have comment cards. As a courtesy, we ask you to fill out a comment card if you have public comments. You are not required to fill them out, but it makes things easier for us, from an administrative perspective. And so, the first person who we have a comment from is David Moore, followed by Laura Martin.
Through the chair?
Yes.
And so, if we don't have a lot of cards, or a lot of comments, I mean, this is such a pivotal conversation, I hope we can be accommodating to speakers who have a lot to say. I mean, you know, you're generally very kind about that, but I want them to have a chance to get their mind, you know, they don't get many chances to do this.
We would encourage people to provide constructive feedback, and we'll do what we can to accommodate it. We'll catch you off after at least 10 minutes, I'm definitely cutting you off. Bridget's like, no, don't say that. David? Dave?
I have a few concerns about the project on Poplar. One, having a bike lane on Poplar with the reconstruction, making Poplar about twice as wide as it is now in certain areas. I really believe with the traffic, from the traffic light, probably doubled since I've lived there, since the traffic lights gone in, which has some positives and some negatives to it. Traffic lights, probably more positives than negatives, but it does bring a lot more traffic down, and the speed of the traffic is unbelievable. I mean, we had cars drag racing side by side from the beach parking lot, back toward Highway One on Poplar, just, what, last Saturday? So, and I mean, they're going 60 miles an hour, and you're going to put a bicycle lane and sidewalks in? I really would advise looking for a new route for the bicycle trail to the Coastal Trail. Either, either side of Poplar, either one of those streets would be probably safer than trying to put all the, and I, and I have some experience in parks, I worked for the county parks for 42 years, and I designed trails, I built trails, worked with contractors designing trails. So, it's an easy, easy fix for cities and governments to say, let's have a multi-use trail, and put everyone on one thing. It lowers the cost of the trail, but it also causes major maintenance and enforcement problems. When you have horses, skaters, bicycles, hikers, runners, and joggers, all on the same trail, causes major, major problems. We had one Sawyer Camp Trail, which is heavily used with multi-use, and it takes a lot of patrol time, so unless, I mean, when you do a plan, you have to worry about the, the time and cost to the city to maintain and patrol that trail. But, and also on Poplar, on that complete, complete street, I think you referred to, plan, sidewalks, I believe sidewalks are suburbia thing of 1950s, and I don't think they're needed everywhere. The west side on Poplar, one reason why we moved there 15 years ago was the ruralness of it. And a complete project like that, I think the budget was 1.2 million for that project, from Main Street to Railroad. You're not putting in any drainage, you're rebuilding the whole road base, but you're not putting in any sub-infrastructure for the drainage. Right now, the 400 block doesn't have any sidewalks. When it rains, on a heavy rain, stormy night, we get flooded out in the street. By morning, it's gone. If you go up one block where infrastructure has been put in, and homeowners have been forced to put in sidewalks with building of their houses, you have puddles there that block half the street, half of two streets on the corner. You can't use the sidewalk, you can't get across that puddle, and it stays there for 10, 12 days. So, just paving a new road and putting in sidewalks is not necessarily the best way to go, I think. A lot of us have rain gardens out in front of our house, we use, I mean, it soaks up the water, goes back into the ground, doesn't bring all those pollutants down and drain it into the ocean. But I don't want to take all night, but, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Dave. Next person we have is Laura, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Hi, I'm Laura Alster-Martin. I live on Grandview Boulevard in Half Moon Bay, and I like to be able to use bicycle or walk to go into town, and to take care of.
Laura, could I ask you to speak into the microphone, just so we can?
Closer.
So, the people walking, watching at home can get your voice.
People watching at home, anyways.
Be surprised.
Anyways, I, I like to be able to use my bicycle or walk and get into town, and I would be doing it on a daily basis. However, every time I do it, I feel like I'm taking my life into my hands. I have to choose whether I'm going to try and run across Highway One, or take a chance on that area by terrace. I don't want to become the statistic that is used to justify putting in a light, or doing anything. I'd really rather stay alive for a good, long time, and have pedestrian access into Half Moon Bay. And so, I just would like to encourage you, I, I know there's some projects you're working on, and I would like to encourage you to expedite those. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Roberts, followed by Joe Chamberlain, followed by Sarah Polgar.
Hi, I'm Lenny Roberts. So, you sort of, Mr. Chairman, you sort of got my thought process going with your question about the beaches, and long-term, we want the beaches to continue. It's very well-known that when we armor the, the bluffs, we lose the beaches. The beaches will go, because the ocean carries the sand, the ocean scours, and you also don't have the supply anymore from the bluffs replenishing the beaches, and we don't, we have other supplies too, coming down from rivers and so forth, but the bluff, in many places in California, the bluffs are actually sources of sand supply. So, where we've armored, well, first, and then if you put in something like the breakwater at the harbor, you are, we have a very painful example of how the, the, the breakwater has focused the wave energy on surfer's beach, and we've lost surfer's beach. We keep losing it over and over again. We keep armoring it, but we're going to have to eventually move the highway inland, and, but that erosion is going to continue, because we're not going to take the breakwater out. So, you know, those decisions, wherever you put some kind of structure, either parallel to the shore, or out into the ocean, it has long-term consequences, and so I, you know, I would strongly urge that all the policies that you could possibly have would, you know, have, in many, in many places in Half Moon Bay, we're very fortunate, because we have room. We have public lands that are able to accommodate the beach, the, the bluff retreat. There are some places where we have existing homes. That's the most tough decision of all. Miramar is a good example, where the city has one half the road, and the county has the other half, I think. And that's been repeatedly armored, and there is no beach there anymore, and it's going to continue to be attacked by the waves, and as, as sea level rises, it's going to be worse. So, you know, at some point, it makes very difficult decisions when you have developed land that people own, and that people have put their life's investment in, and they don't want to move, they don't want to have, they don't want to lose their house, like the Ranger House got lost. But those are the toughest decisions. I, it's, the coastal, I think we just had another guidance document that's coming out at the Coastal Commission this month, on bluff retreat, I think. I think I just looked at the agenda, and I think there's something on there. So, this is an issue statewide, and Half Moon Bay is really fortunate that we have so much land that's in public ownership, and we will, that beach will move, the dunes will, we'll lose some of the dunes, we will lose some of the bluffs. And the beaches are our best protection against the ocean, which Mother Nature bats last, so, and the power of the ocean is always surprising us. It really shouldn't, but it does surprise us, so. Those, just some comments off the top of my head. I think I had another, there was one more comment that I had about... So, Jill, I get, when you called, the Vista Trail is referring to that specific trail in Pacific Ridge, or? Or is that just?
Let me clarify. Yeah, the, the Pacific Ridge Trail is planned, it's its own thing. We're showing that area because the idea of the Vista Trail came from the G-PAC, and it was in that, general elevation seemed to be what the conversation was about. They didn't name it that, they were talking about a trail that might connect the backs of the neighborhoods. So, similar to that area, and because we've had feedback about the resources, the habitat area at Pack Ridge, I thought it was a useful graphic, but that is not meant to be that trail, and we don't know what the alignment would be, or even if it's feasible, as the text indicates.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it is a, it is a challenge, for sure, not only in this area, but other areas as well, so. Okay, I, I can stop now.
Thank you. Jill?
Joe Chamberlain, speaking for the Coastside Land Trust this evening. We are event land, as the city staff knows, and we have many, many events all year. A significant portion of them have to do with city property, either because of requests for parking, or because we are actually working to clean up the city's property. And oft, we always get an exemption for the permit. We often have to have a biological report, not a full EIR, but a biologist writes a letter saying what we are, are not doing. And my question is, we do things on the beach, and we also do things not on the beach. So, when you were discussing permits specific to the beach, are you thinking they're going to have a different protocol than the permits we request for other locations? We also don't know when we go, I mean, we've always gotten an exemption, but it's not clear to us the criteria that the city uses to give exemptions. So, speaking from us, we've been very well-treated, and appreciate that, but we just wanted clarification on if there's going to be difference between beach cleanups, other kinds of cleanups, what the protocol will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Sarah?
Hi, I'm Sarah Polgar, and I live at 352 Poplar. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Coastside Land Trust. Regarding the, I want to speak specifically regarding the water-oriented uses, and the city's obligation to protect that public trust use, and point out that I think some of the, the ways that might, you know, things that might need to be done to protect that water-oriented, those water-oriented uses, were things, you know, mentioned already, things like, you know, choices about armoring, not armoring, you know, certainly, you wouldn't want to armor the shoreline, because then that wouldn't be protecting those uses. But I would also point out that there's other ways that the city would need to protect those uses, and example is water quality. So, those uses can, are only viable if the quality of the water is suitable for fishing, for instance, or surfing, and you don't get sick. So, so I would point out that, like, animal waste, big consideration. We already have some serious problems with water quality. So, I just wanted to point out that in terms of protecting a public trust use like that, the kind of level of, or the, the, that the city may need to think more broadly about what is necessary to actually protect that use. And I would also point out that it is the city's obligation that there are times when it will be necessary to make decisions about balancing different public trust uses. So, in case areas where there's an environmentally sensitive habitat, or species, it may sometimes be necessary to limit uses, other public trust uses, because they would, you know, be out of balance with the public trust use, or the public trust, I guess in this case, protect, land use, use is not a great word, but the, in this case, the public trust that is being protected by the city is the environmental trust, that's the, that's... So, I just want to point out that that's something else that the city needs to take into consideration, and that's an example of why a wave runner wouldn't be an appropriate use to be protecting in certain, along our shoreline. So, and then the last thing is kind of, I just wanted to strongly, strongly reemphasize what Lenny said about shoreline protection, and how that is, anytime you harden the shoreline, you are going to get yourself in a big, big amount of trouble, and we are actually extremely fortunate, as a community... And we are actually extremely fortunate as a community to have the buffer area that we do. And I've worked, I worked in, with local communities around San Francisco Bay for ten years around sea level rise planning, and that specific topic. And trust me, we are so, so much better off. So, I just wholeheartedly support her comments. And then the last thing is, I would also like to support the first gentleman's comments, who lives on Poplar. He's my neighbor, down the, well, down-the-street neighbor. And, yeah, not every street can be everything. So, I think I've talked with Jill about this in the past, but complete streets can be a pretty daunting thought for a street like that, if you're talking about trying to have everything be on that street, particularly when you already have one street to the north, fully sidewalked street, you know, why would you go and try to shove all the pedestrian and bicycle, you know, if, if you wanna have a complete street, you already have it one street north, and widening Poplar is not gonna help with traffic speeds. It's gonna be a disaster. And yes, I heard the car, the cars drag racing the other night. It was terrifying. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a late entry, John Callen from San Mateo Land Exchange.
I'll make my late statements very quick. We just have a continuing concern with the coastal access along Redondo Beach Road, and that which has been shown as coastal access in the Wave Crest Restoration Plan and approved by the Coastal Conservancy and the Coastal Commission way back in the late seventies through the early eighties. And I noticed that the latest plans show our visions to that coastal access point. And we've submitted multiple questions, in fact, maybe too many questions, to the city with regards to the access projected, and we've seen some answers, and we'd like to, we'd, well, we'd probably like to ask more questions. We intend to work with the city. We'd like to clean up Redondo Beach Road and provide trails and other much-needed development within the city by working hand-in-hand with the people. Again, our key concern is just long-term access along Redondo Beach Road to the ocean. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last call for public comments. With that, I'm gonna close public comments and turn it back over to my fellow commissioners for discussion. John?
Give me a break. So I just have a few points that are either not in the document, or I think could be stronger points in the document. And it's my point of reference for myself, to be making these sort of abstract what-if decisions for things going forward. My first, and I feel like myself is a, that I own a house here and I live here, that I'm just really lucky to be where I live, but I'm also obligated to be a steward of where I live. And that means sharing my resources with people that wanna come here and visit. So, that's not an option, that's, that's a requirement, you know, to be working, that the public is not them and me, you know, it's, it's all one group. And what I see a little bit missing still is, and I'd like to talk as, where we live now is an ecosystem. I don't know that that's the right language, but ecosystem. We have these different words that are kind of inflammatory, like habitat and sensitive and these different things, that different people have, they're not clear definitions of what that is, in my point of view. And so, the ecosystem is everything that's here. It's, it's, it's the, it's us, it's the creatures, the non-living things, it's, it's all, and it was different in 1970, and it was, you know, 200 years ago, it was less than 1,000 people lived here. And in the future, it's going to be different. And so, I'm concerned that, right now, the mechanism, and I'm assuming that our document here is guidelines, if, if, it's the policies, if somebody wants to actually do something. It's not a police document, it's, you know, if somebody wants to build something or change something, and this is the guidelines for that. And so, I think that, right now, we have a very weak definition of habitat. We, we know, and we've been told by our staff and the attorneys, that all of the city of Half Moon Bay is in one way or another sensitive habitat for different things, different living creatures, that, you know, in, in one way or another, every piece of land and every parcel has a conflict with, with some of the habitat. And so, as a whole ecosystem, if we, in our document, if we could have a more clear definition of what we're going to do about that, because everything that's here is already here, so how does that work? You know, if everything's already here, and people wanna do different things and change things, and then there's already a mechan, and, and we want to be good neighbors and allow people that wanna come and visit here and be here, if, if there's, and, and we wanna build something to be the infrastructure for that, but when we try to do that, it gets blocked at all these different approval levels, because we don't have policies that define what do we do as a city, because the whole city is technically a sensitive habitat for some things. So, I would like to see more stronger definitions, specific definitions of how we work with that, these sensitive habitats. So that's...
I think that's a very good point, and I think we've had some interesting discussions in the past. Our previous counsel made the somewhat facetious argument that, technically speaking, almost every part of Half Moon Bay is within 100 yards of, of sensitive habitat. And oftentimes, we have projects where we're asked to make an exception, or I wouldn't say look the other way, but have findings that may not comport with what we actually see. So, I think it's a good point, and, and maybe one of the items to consider is, and I'm not sure if this fits in the general plan, but do we have a call for, like, citywide species protection plan for those species that are the red-legged frog? I mean, I don't know if that's something we need to do, but I think your point is, is well-made, is we need to have a policy at a high level that thinks about how we're dealing with these things, 'cause it's, I find it lacking, and we're always asked to make exceptions on behalf of, you know, an applicant.
Yeah, we first ran up against that with our heritage tree ordinance. You know, everything that's 12 inches or bigger is a heritage tree, which is, kind of generalized, and I, and I think we have the same kind of problem with, with that.
Any other items that you wanted to call? I don't know if anybody had any other comments on that?
Okay, there's not many. I, I think that, and tonight, we're dealing mostly with coastal access. So, I think that, I don't know what the geographic limit of that is, because on some weekends, the city limits are blocking coastal access. So, I, so we might wanna be, kinda get a better understanding of that. So, and I, 'cause I think it, 'cause there's so much overlap with other transportation and other, other kind of sections. I, I'm curious about, something came to my mind, is that if we're providing the general public, we're sharing with them and letting them, it's kinda like coming to a park, they come here to the coast side. So, specifically, when they come to the beach, we hear complaints about the trash enclosures overflowing, and it doesn't look good, and that kind of stuff. I know that when we go to parks like Yosemite, we're expected to take out what we brought in, you know, except for very few small places. And, and so, I'm wondering why we have, now, I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, but why are there trashcans at all at the beach? I mean, if, if somehow someone showed up and they've got stuff with them, somehow they managed to bring it with them. So, maybe we have a policy that says, you know, whatever you bring, you gotta take with you, and if you don't, you know, you get heavily fined for something like that. And maybe there's a mechanism for it to be self-police, you know, people take selfies, or however. So, and I don't see that in here, you know, yet, a mechanism to consider our beach access is, people come here because it's a natural and preserved, you know, it's not Coney Island, you know, so they come here, and, and if we, if we don't have a way to, in our policy statements, to keep it that way, and otherwise, it's gonna end up being, you know, like Venice Beach, or, you know, eventually enough people come here. And that also comes back into how they get here, in their automobiles. I don't see, in the foreseeable future, people getting here other ways than coming in automobiles. And I'm not so sure we have yet, in the policy here, a, a way to tell people, you know, the beach is kind of full, you know, you kinda gotta, can't get in, you know. And, you know, in 1970, when somebody came here, they came in their, you know, 1950 or 60, whatever Chevrolet, and if they had to sit in traffic for two hours, it'd be miserable, you know, they, they had no air conditioning, and their things would overheat, and, you know, all these vehicles. Now, the vehicles are fabulous. So, the little environment inside this vehicle is just wonderful. So, they're already coming with this cozy little place, and they don't, I mean, they may be annoyed, because they're like a Disneyland, waiting for two hours to get on a ride, but they put up with it because their little mini-environment is so comfortable. And so, we, there's a limit to how many of these vehicles we can fit, you know, in different places, and it causes, I mean, 10 years ago, except for Pumpkin Festival, I never saw a gridlock in Half Moon Bay. And we've, I've saw it more than 12, 15 times this year, where it's absolutely gridlocked, which means people keep coming in, and, and as a policy, we don't have a mechanism to say, okay, this is full, and you can't go here, you know, you have to take your car somewhere else. So, and I think, I mean, we can't, we have no way to predict or control how many people and why they come here and that kind of stuff. All we can say is, you know, where they go. And if we build them roads, they'll drive on the roads. If we don't build them roads, they'll drive all over the land, you know, and the same thing with their own personal stuff. So, it, somehow, in the, I don't know if it's beach access, because it impacts that, especially at the beaches that the city has control over, but I would like to see, you know, if the parking lot's full, then what's Plan B? You know, do we have a way to say we are required to have some sort of plan to do control of, you know, overcrowdedness? Is, is that a policy question?
Good question.
The other thing is, and I agree with almost everybody here talking about, they come up with a specific example of putting sidewalks on Poplar Avenue, but the reality is, at the implementation level, if a decision is made to do some kind of street improvements, they're going to a city standard that's going to end up looking like San Jose, or Los Angeles, or, you know, parts of Half Moon Bay. And so, and I think I've talked with staff a little bit about, at the policy level, maybe we have a way to, in a more powerful language, we're going, the ruralness of the area is what we're preserving. And is there a way to have even a stronger language that says, if we're gonna deruralize, that's probably not the right way to say it, that we can have customized solutions to every individual case? 'Cause it's not that big a city, and we don't have that many times that that's going to come up. So, right now, when I, when we look through this, there's, it's very weak in the policy document right now, for doing the more customized implementation solutions.
Those are good points.
Yeah, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Les?
Rick, thank you. I'm trying to wrap my, my head on this, and of course, we're still talking policies here, and we haven't got to the point of kinda writing code on this. So, here we're talking about coastal access, we're talking about recreation, and some of the areas that come up here on this. First of all, you know, as far as access, I'm not sure how my fellow commissioners feel about this, but I think, given the makeup of Half Moon Bay, rural streets are all already there, I think the key is not to reduce access from where it is right now. You know, and I, and I think that is critical on anything we do. That should be a test for any policy that we put down, that, you know, if, 'cause if it is, I think the Coastal Commission might get on our case. So, I think that's something. If we can increase access without other issues, that's fine, too. So, kinda the first do-no-harm kinda point I wanna make. The second area under recreation, and I guess we talk about, we're talking about the bicycle pedestrian issue, and I think that's where the town boulevard concept came up, that having something that would improve pedestrians crossing Highway One, bicycles, and things like that, and certainly anything that we can do to improve safety, helping Laura cross Highway One, and others, I think, you know, that's, that's key. But, the other issue that I pointed out is do-no-harm, and from an access standpoint, putting a town boulevard in there, some of the comments I heard, slow traffic and so on, you know, I think that reduces access. And those of you that have read my comments, you know, I, I have no problem with, with the concept, but if you, if you don't do something else, you're gonna reduce access, and I also reduce commute times and so on. There are people that, I keep on hearing saying, four-lane Highway One, no way. But, if you put a town boulevard in, you reduce speed or so on, you're gonna have even worse gridlock. So, I think one thing is incompatible with the other. So, from a concept standpoint, I don't think you can add town boulevards, slow speeds, without putting out a policy in there that would only work if we make Highway One four lanes, at least through parts of Half Moon Bay, and even north into El Granada, Moss Beach, and, and Montero. So, I think that's an issue, too. The, the other one that I kinda raised in my comments is, since we can't increase the size of Poplar, or the speed of Poplar, which is already obviously too, too fast for, for some people, I think one way to, to try to increase people's access to the beach is by finding ways which the city can, in effect, maybe put commuting areas, parking areas, and, and help people get to the beach. I pointed to one area as having a parking district. I mean, there, there are areas in Half Moon Bay that could be used for parking, hopefully with, without any, well, without any harming of other habitat. That could then be a staging area for people with children, bicycles, or so on, and either through jetties or other ways to get to the beach. I think it's something that, as a policy standpoint, I'd, I'd like to see that in the, in the plan. So, those are at least two high-level areas that I'd like to see, from a policy standpoint. How we implement those, obviously, that's the detail down the, down the road, but from a policy standpoint, I'd certainly like to see at least those two items in the, in the plan.
I think those are two really good points. I think we should probably hit on them again in the town boulevard discussions. I think it directly ties into that. Jimmy, do you have any other comments?
Oh, I, so I provided some written comments that I know have been distributed, and I won't, you know, there were a lot of them, so I won't go through all of them, but I, there were a couple that I wanna touch on, just to be sure that I have provided clarity. When I reread them, I thought, what will my colleagues think if they read this? What will they think I'm advocating? And then I wanna, I appreciate the time that Wes took to provide his written comments. I thought about them, and I wanted to respond. You've reinforced, sort of, I think you did a nice job of summarizing what I read tonight, and I wanna speak to it, because there are parts that I agree, and there are parts that I respectfully disagree. So, first to the stuff that came off of my, my earlier comments. There was a slide in Jill's pack with respect to coastal access points that identified some of the larger areas, and I, that was fine. That, the list, you know, the area around the two or three areas was reasonable to me. The discussion about Poplar as an access point is not, should not be misconstrued as me saying it should be the access point for all manner of, of access. I think... I think that John's, Commissioner Evans' comment at the last meeting about how it makes sense for different kinds of levels of impact to be, of coastal access can be separated, so that a pedestrian doesn't necessarily have to navigate with a cyclist or someone riding an electric scooter or, you know, and they, maybe they don't have to deal with a, with a dog walker walking fifteen dogs. So I'm not necessarily suggesting that these access points be the way for all avenues. And maybe it dovetails with your comment about the rural quality, maybe different roads as, you know, sort of carry different loads. That's another way of implementing the Coastal Act policy that says that no one area should be burdened with, you know, carrying the weight of all coastal access. No one would expect Poplar, for example, to have that kind of, that kind of impact. The second group in that section were these smaller areas. And as you probably know, in the history of development on the west side of Highway One, when subdivisions have been permitted since the Coastal Act, the, one of the interpretations of maximizing coastal access, subject to protection of coastal resources, that Balancing Act, is that when you put in a subdivision that could potentially block people from getting from where they, from, let's say, near Highway One down to the beach, you provide a lateral trail that gets you through that subdivision. And that, I think that's a really good idea and we should, I think we should continue that. It's in our policies now and it needs, it needs to continue. However, it's really important that those things be maintained and guarded very carefully. And here's the reason why. The approval of containing a condition that said a lateral trail would be built in an area might say, you know, it's, it's only for footpaths. And then at some point, the people who've lived in that area a decade later, who weren't party to that original conversation, say, well, you know, I want to bring my cooler and, you know, my, my kids, I need to bring a baby carriage, I need to ride my bike, and why is there a bollard that restricts me from doing that? I'm gonna take it out. And it gets taken out without the benefit of a permit. Or maybe we talk about a permit and we approve an exemption, or maybe it comes to us and we say, fine, take it out. The consequences of that can be unintended. It can create hazards. It can impact, adversely impact habitat. So for example, there's a trail in Casa Del Mar, more than five hundred feet from my house, that is, has become, it used to be flat and the vegetation absorbed the water in that area. But now it's running downhill and it's created ruts. And the cyclists use the trail when it's wet, because the bollard was removed, I think, by the city actually. And it's created a serious erosion problem. And someone may look at it today and say, it's not serious. And I guess that's a question of degree. But, you know, it's, it's not gonna be serious until it is. So the need to have proper maintenance of our lateral trails and recognizing these small areas is really vital. It's as vital as assuring that we continue to have beaches. You know, if, if we don't do that, then we still don't have access and it doesn't help I also want to reiterate some points that Joe Chamberlain mentioned on, at a couple of our earlier meetings about the informal bluff tops, because they also contribute to erosion. I think the broader issue here with respect to coastal access, if we were gonna try to, you know, boil up an abstract policy about this and leave the details to the implementation plan, is to recognize that we, we only permit trails, we only permit access where it doesn't create a hazard or adversely impact habitat. Which segues to my next point, which is a comment that, that Les made about, or maybe it was the chair about all of Half, or maybe it was John, about all of Half Moon Bay being habitat. And I just want to respectfully disagree. There's a lot of habitat in Half Moon Bay, but it's not all habitat. Moreover, our canon of law has pretty well-defined habitat. It's, it's in the details and it takes a lot of reading to know what a wetland is, but it's well-defined. It take, you know, you know, we have specialists who tell us where the frogs and the snakes use habitat. And, you know, I'm not claiming to be that expert, but they are and they can tell us. And there are plenty of places downtown that are not habitat. There are places in subdivision, unimproved lots, that are not habitat. And there are things like Highway One and Highway Ninety-two that provide sharp limits of where habitat is. So while I think it's fair to say that there is a lot of habitat in Half Moon Bay, I think it is, it doesn't serve the planning process to argue that it's all habitat and therefore we have to do something, you know, we can't protect it. We can and we should. We just have to be clear about what the definitions are. And we also, of course, respect the constitutional limitations of takings. And, you know, we have to, we have to be clear about where those rules are. With respect to parking, I have mentioned that, earlier in the process, that in addition to our existing LCP, there was a failed attempt to update the local coastal program, I think it was in two thousand and three. And one of the things the planning commission did right at that time, I think, and kudos to Linda, who was working hard on that aspect of the LCP, Linda Poncini. We were looking at the list of the inventory of parking spaces, and the policy that said we need to provide a lot more parking was really written before we provided a lot more parking. So the argument in the two thousand and three study was we've really implemented that policy. That's not to say that there isn't a good argument for facilitating additional parking, such as the, you know, I don't know what you were thinking of, maybe a parking deck at the east edge of town, or I have no idea what, what you have in mind. But, you know, to specify that we, you know, if we were gonna have a policy that said we have to pave over the bluff tops with parking, I would be very concerned about that. I don't think that, I don't think that is protective of coastal resources. And I think it, it basically slaughters the goose that lays the golden egg. You know, not that we should be driven by finance, but that, you know, that natural beauty is the reason people come here. And that natural beauty is in fact protected by the Coastal Act. Which brings me to the next point, which is that there is a carrying capacity that I think John spoke to in his earlier comments. You know, the, the region sees Half Moon Bay as a resource for, you know, escaping the hot days and coming for the big festivals. But we do have a finite carrying capacity. And your question about how to, you know, what happens when we run out, you know, and I should add that it's not just roadway and parking, right? It's also water, sewer services, police services, fire service, emergency services. And we cannot, we cannot design, you know, our public works, infrastructure, to achieve the maximum. Because whatever we design for, we will create additional demand. The principle is that the, the demand is not independent of capacity. If we build it, we will attract more capacity. How many people come? People stop coming when the inconvenience of dealing with the saturation of our resources is so annoying that they say, I would rather not come. And if you provide more capacity, that will remain the criteria for when they decide not to come. It's just that you will serve more of them before they get to that saturation frustration point. Which brings me to my gentle disagreement with you, Les, on the subject of the widening of, the four-laning of Highway One throughout town. And I appreciate the motivations that you described, providing for local access is very desirable. However, unless we actually made Highway One four-lane from one end of the county coast to the other, we will be in a, a really tight bottleneck at some point, where the road changes from four lanes, two in each direction, to two lanes, one in each direction. And the, and because additional capacity will inspire additional saturation of, by more demand, when the traffic saturates that four-lane period, it's going to take longer for it to filter into the two-lane area, because there's more of those cars that are trying to get into the two-lane area. And the intermixing of local traffic with visitor-serving traffic over longer areas will aggravate that problem. I don't think that the town boulevard concept, although it may slow down the velocity of traffic, automatically prohibits the, the flow of traffic. It may be, for example, that the flow of traffic could be enhanced if the cars that invariably decide that they need to make a left turn where there's no left turn permitted, or if there's a place where pedestrians know they can cross safely, as opposed to deciding, I need to cross here because this is where I am and I'm not gonna go a mile in either direction to get to it. We could actually improve the flow of traffic. And what I would suggest is that we just keep an open mind, rather than automatically assume that the solution is to maximize the amount of two-laning. And, you know, I think this is a fairly public, generally, kind of conversation that we can have, so I think we're, it's fair to say we're all in this together. You know, the two lanes that would limit your ability, you know, that would limit the ability to get to Frenchman's Creek would limit the ability to get to Kehoe as well. So I feel the concern you have about access to and from you and your neighbors' homes. And I, and I feel it personally as well. However, I think it's really important that we do a good job of modeling what those impacts really would be, rather than just assume that if it's four lanes, it's gotta go faster. Because if it's four-lane, it's going to create a larger pocket that funnels down. And if that additional traffic is as big as I suspect it will be, because of the people that will then decide they can jam themselves in the Highway One, it will take as long as, as it does now and maybe longer. There's a computer engineering concept called Little's Law, if you're familiar with it. That's the, that's the queuing network model problem that I'm trying to describe. Also with respect to parking, I just want to put a word out about electric vehicles. I didn't provide a comment on that in my written section, but, you know, to the extent that this document is gonna dovetail with other, other, other sections of the local coastal program, we have to reduce our greenhouse gases. Having people parked on Ninety-two, idling, waiting to get out of town or get into town, it takes a lot less if they're electric vehicles. But we don't have enough parking for electric vehicles in town. If you live in Richmond or you live in, I don't know, in the East Bay, it's really hard to have the chutzpah to believe that you're gonna get here and find a place to charge up. So, you know, it, I think it is reasonable to say that our, that we have not done a good job of maximizing coastal access in the era of alternative to internal combustion engines. And that troubles me. I would like to see policies that encourage that. With regard to the Half Moon Bay walking trail, Jill, could you put up the slide with Pacific Ridge? Thank you. So that's gonna provide a really nice view up at the city limits. There is a road on the, on the east side of the city limits, up in the county, up at the top of the ridge, it's Diggs Canyon Road. And I will confess that it would be a fantasy to, you know, I mean, a really pretty thing would be if there was some way to get up there and be able to hike or ride a bike and, you know, it, it goes all the way to Ninety-two. I mean, it's beautiful up there. Not that I have ever been up there. But, but I, I read about it, yeah, I've seen, I've seen the flyovers. But, but it is, it would be very challenging to engineer a trail like that. If you could get up that high, then you have the potential to travel along the spine of the upper ridge through an existing road. But I believe it's a private road. I'm not sure the road that's there is permitted. It's clearly in county land and maybe there's a sphere of influence opportunity there. But, but it's, I think it's, it's, I won't say it's impossible. It's worth looking at, if only to conclude that we can't. But, you know, I want to, I want to admit that short of that, I don't see a way to make the east, the, the connection going north-south that you would like. You know, the areas that are within the city are unavailable. To the east, you know, you might say it's within the city's sphere of influence, but, you know, it would certainly be damaging to the land unless you were all the way up at the ridge. And I don't know how you get all the way up there and into that private land. I, I think it would be very challenging. But I acknowledge that fantasy, because people have told it to me, and when people come to me, it's my job to put it on, put it on the table. So I, there, I put it on the table. I had a comment about marijuana. And when I read it, I thought, okay, why did I say that? What did I really, what, and what I really meant was, if we have, if we, if the city decides to allow marijuana cultivation in, on our open spaces, we should be extracting a lot of open-spaceland in exchange for a relatively small area that's focused on marijuana cultivation. I am not advocating, that's a, that's a council decision, that's not our call. But we are certainly incurring large risks. The cultivation technology today does not require those very large areas of square footage. And to me, it's an opportunity to reclaim some valuable open space as a concession for permitting an extremely valuable cultivation technology within the city limits. And I think it's worth somebody coming out and saying it, so there. And if we don't do it, it doesn't cost anything to have commented on it. In, in a similar vein, we haven't talked much about bed and breakfasts, sorry, Airbnbs in this document. That technology could allow a new, you know, it does allow a different stratification of very high-end Airbnb, very simple, you know, more modest Airbnb technology that can facilitate coastal access. However, it does, and, and that can facilitate recreation, but that kind of recreation has the potential to adversely impact neighborhoods. I believe there's some guidance, or maybe it's already come down from the Coastal Commission. And I'm, I'm interested in hearing more about that. I can tell you, just, you know, from anecdotally, that one of my neighbors, and I know technically we're not supposed to be doing it in Half Moon Bay, but I know people do. And one of my neighbors did it, and they had a wedding party and, you know, their Winnebago blocked the sidewalk. They were partying until pretty late, there was a lot of noise, the trash brought in the raccoons. And they were very nice, but they were just unaware of the impacts that they were having. When you knock on the door and say, hey, the trucks are coming and the raccoons have pulled all of your barbecued hamburger out, would you mind cleaning it up before they come, so that the rest of us don't have our trash attacked for the rest of the year? They get it. But that's something that if you just, you know, if you're used to going to a Sheraton and somebody cleans up after you, and now you're renting somebody's house, you might not know that. So we need a different approach that's more sensitive to the impacts of neighborhoods. And I don't know if that's focusing it in particular areas. You know, I don't see how, it would be hard for me to argue that person in subdivision X could decide to do an Airbnb and a person in subdivision Y shouldn't. But however we do it, I think we need to, we need to give it some thought. You know, maybe there are people who would value the downtown Airbnb experience, and there are other people who want to, you know, wake up on the coast, kind of like they're looking at, I don't know, that they're just looking at the ocean or the sand dunes or So I, I have a few more, but I've, I've gone on for quite a while, so I'm gonna give the floor up, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Jimmy. Brian?
Thank you. A couple of quick comments. I wanted to, wanted to just sort of second or echo some of the concerns about Poplar Avenue and the concept that Sarah had mentioned, that not all streets can be all things. So I think it's really important to look at Poplar and Kelly really differently, and then also recognizing that there are streets to the north and south that do have improvements that can facilitate some level of pedestrian and bicycle access. I know in other communities, you know, there's a lot of those sorts of arterial streets and side streets that are actually designated as bike boulevards, where pedestrians sort of... and side streets that are actually designated as bike boulevards or pedestrian sort of routes. So potentially, you know, maybe some of those streets to the north or the south could be designated as a bike boulevard, bringing pedestrians into some of those streets. I know, I live in that neighborhood. My street doesn't necessarily have sidewalks, but I can walk right down the middle of the street and I'm perfectly fine. So, but I wouldn't do that on Poplar, for sure. So, you know, there might be places where that might be appropriate to look at. Regarding the special event permits, I'm definitely sensitive to Joe's concerns about coastside land trusts and other organizations potentially being charged for some of their fees. So I would like to see some specific policies that sort of recognize or exempt groups that provide specific stewardship services. And I'd like to see, you know, something that just recognizes volunteer activities in general on the coast. I mean, one of the things that I've been, you know, thinking about, I think would be great to have on the coast side is actually establishing some level of a coastside conservation corps, something similar to the California Conservation Corps. There's other organizations that exist, but, you know, sort of a dedicated group that could actually be organized during a summer period or other times that can be really focused on, you know, beach cleanup or specific projects, work with the state parks, work with the city to actually do some habitat enhancement, restoration projects, maintenance projects, and other things. And those types of events, whether they're volunteer or more organized nonprofit types of groups, shouldn't be held to any special event types of conditions. Wading into the habitat question just a bit, you know, I agree and disagree with both Jimmy and John a bit on the habitat bit, but I just wanted to, you know, sort of make a general point that, you know, there's a lot of habitat in Half Moon Bay, but not necessarily all of it is good habitat. You know, there are areas that are maybe roadside--I don't want to say ditches, I know that's sort of a loaded term, but, you know, wetlands and other areas that are in other areas and just, you know, in general, you know, good design, good restoration projects, good projects that can facilitate public access can also enhance habitats. So, you know, I know over the past number of decades, there's been a real effort to conserve habitats, protect habitats, set those areas aside, and fully support that. I absolutely support that. But I think, you know, as we start talking about climate change and sort of balancing a lot of different things, we need to look at habitat enhancement and restoration and starting to look at how we can actually invest in enhancing these areas so we don't necessarily have sort of isolated islands of species habitat, but something that's really functional but that can also incorporate public access improvements and some of the parks and recreation coastal access that we're all interested in. I do want to reiterate my support for the Town Boulevard. And I said last time, as we were talking about the Town Boulevard, whether it's two lanes, four lanes, I'm somewhat agnostic too. Interested in seeing just sort of how the design comes in, but I do agree with Jimmy to some degree that, you know, slowing down traffic doesn't necessarily decrease access. I don't think it--you know, the capacity's still there, might be moving a little bit slower. And I think it's really important to recognize that commute traffic and tourist traffic have very different cycles here on the coast side, and there's a lot different effect. And, you know, I know we're often very concerned about traffic here on the coast side, but we're not alone. Traffic exists all over the place, and certainly traffic problems on the peninsula, in the East Bay. I actually just got back recently from Hawaii. Traffic exists all over, especially in coastside areas. So, you know, to some degree, as annoying as it is, you know, I don't, you know, we're not alone in that. Interested in the concept that John mentioned about pack-it-in, pack-it-out sort of policies in our beaches, the provision of trash services. I mean, it is fair to say that we subsidize trash removal for the visitors on the coast through the provision of trash services. Flip side is, we don't want to see a bunch of trash on the beach. I think the improvements at Poplar that have been made recently are certainly a step in the right direction. I think a lot--I think the aesthetics and the visual quality of those coastal access areas is important to sort of create a social obligation and emphasis amongst the visitors that this is a special place and that they need to participate in making sure that stays special. So whether that's interpretive panels, environmental education signs, you know, the signs that have been posted sort of clandestinely at Poplar Beach that, you know, stress not leaving your trash on the beach, I think all of that is good because it creates a social pressure. And I think, you know, eventually it would be great to be able to move to a point where, yeah, we don't provide trash cans and people are expected to pack their stuff out. I don't know that we're there yet, but I think that's certainly something that, you know, if we can have policies that begin to move us towards that and really emphasize the personal responsibility in our open spaces is necessary. I'm--personally, I'm really interested in the relationship between our city open spaces and those open spaces that are managed by the state parks and ensuring that there's consistent coordination and management of those open spaces and the trail areas. You know, the public doesn't really care if something's owned by the city or the state or the county. They certainly don't pay attention to who manages which. You know, as vegetation starts to encroach on the coastal trail, if it's on state parks' property, it's state parks' responsibility, but, you know, generally, everybody thinks it's the city's responsibility. So I don't know to what extent we can build in policies that nudge, encourage, or sort of set some expectations for the state parks. State parks has had a difficult number of years in terms of funding, but I know there's a number of efforts in terms of a statewide park bond and other efforts to try to bolster state parks' funding. And to whatever extent we can make sure that this document positions our community to make sure that state parks is investing in our community and meeting the sort of performance and management guidelines that we want, I think is a good thing. I guess one last point is just kind of looking at how we define coastal access. And I kind of made the point before, you know, we've talked a lot about coastal access, but I think it's just important to talk about downtown access. And I think we have a lot of visitors who come to our community who go straight to the coast and don't necessarily go to the downtown. So I think it's important to think about how we bring people from the coast into our downtown area and support our businesses. But also, spreading out the impact so it's not just in terms of automobile traffic and parking, isn't necessarily focused on the coast. So, you know, I'm looking at the coastal access and planned roadway improvement section that sort of identifies a number of the parking areas and identifies parking areas up and down the coast, but, you know, it doesn't necessarily designate the Johnston House as a parking area. Johnston House could certainly be used as a coastal access parking area. Somebody could park at the Johnston House, unload a bike, there's planned pedestrian improvements to get across Highway One, access the coastal trail, and get down to Poplar Beach. So that's a parking area that people could utilize, there's a lot of space there, currently underutilized, and access the coast. And, you know, there's other areas that I'm sure that we could think about that as well. But I think, you know, establishing a policy for coastal access that sort of sets the expectation that you can drive your car right up to the coast and you're there, I think, you know, we should look at, "Well, no, you can drive your car into Half Moon Bay and then, you know, there's other ways to get to the coast. Maybe you can walk, or you can bike, or maybe there are some alternative modes of transportation, jetties or other things I've heard of." And so you're parking not necessarily right on the coast, right on the bluffs, on some of those areas that we're concerned about, but in some of those other developed areas where we can kind of spread out that impact. So those are my big comments at this point. Thank you.
Kind of covered a lot of the points we wanted to cover individually, so what I'll do is I'll make a few of my points, and I want to make sure that we've covered all of the policies that city staff wanted to get through. Big picture, the waste management and maintenance of the trails. I'm not sure where those policies fit in, but the garbage cans you've put on Poplar Beach, several comments that have been made have been a huge improvement. The waste, the garbage that people used to store on the street and the creeks has largely disappeared. It's been tremendous, and some of the social pressure has helped. I think if we look at the coastal access areas around town and have policies that sort of encourage the city to put up those types of waste containers and have that type of signage, maybe even community-inspired signage so that the neighbors can put their own signs up and not just have it be hodgepodge ragtag signs that aren't super appealing. I mean, but thinking about how do coastal access points, how do you deal with garbage on those coastal access points, I think is the big thing because the garbage drives people crazy. And having a comprehensive plan, not only deal with garbage on the city-owned properties, but the county-owned properties and the state parks would be terrific because state parks are a mess. And if the city can lend a little help to the state parks, to deal with all the garbage that is deposited on those beaches, it would be tremendous. If we had some way to work more collaboratively with state parks so we can maybe take on some of that responsibility as opposed to worrying about whose jurisdiction we're dealing with, that would be an integrated way of dealing with coastal access that I think would be really helpful. The same thing for maintenance. Maybe it makes sense to have an agency that works across the divide along the coastal area here in town so that we can deal with trail access, make sure the trails are maintained, make sure that we have access to them. We had asked when the Pillar Cidos Bridge was rebuilt recently that we get a report back on infrastructure. And I think maybe part of what we need to have is, you know, that infrastructure still sits in the state parks, but it was paid for largely by the city and help from other places. But we need some kind of policy that allows us to actually police or oversee or have administrative oversight around the infrastructure and make sure that we're actually being held accountable for maintaining it. I think that's what's--something that's kind of lacking from a big-picture perspective. And again, things like hotels, Airbnb, we really need to think about the garbage associated with all of those facilities and what we're doing to minimize garbage when we're providing access. I don't know about--in my household, we have all kinds of interesting discussions about ways you can keep people from bringing garbage to the beach that I won't bore everybody with or entertain everybody with here, but I do think it's worth revisiting the policies. And certainly, as part of that, maybe we ask the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, who we pay, to police the beaches with horses, or police on horses, just to encourage people to do the right thing. I think those are things worth considering in terms of keeping our beaches cleaner. I think there's been a lot of comments about armoring the bluff tops, armoring the beaches. I'm concerned about that. I do think we need to have policies that focus on how do we protect the beaches, protect access without these short-sighted policies that ultimately damage the beach and increase our costs. And maybe we--I'm not sure how we re-engineer the breakwater, but that would be something I'd like us to consider, is that a policy we can put in place of, you know, do we look at longer-term re-engineering the breakwater, re-engineering the man-made changes we make here? You know, I think everybody's covered a lot of the things, water quality are important. I think the big thing that I'd like to get to is Town Boulevard and maybe go through the checklist we have here and cover these things one by one. So maybe we could start from the top. My comment on the Town Boulevard is love the idea of improving the flow. To Les' point, I mean, he's made this point to me privately and in some other public meetings, ingress and egress is a major area of concern. How do you get on? How do you get off? How do you, living here, get from the north to the south easily? I think the flow is the thing we need to look at. I think bringing down the top speed would be a benefit, as much as I like to get across town quickly when there's no traffic. And maybe part of that is we have different traffic policies on the weekend versus the weekday, which I think is, you know, this goes back to your point of maybe you need to be odd, have pilots and innovation, use paint. I think it should be a policy to do some experimentation where the city and Caltrans can test out some ideas to see what does and doesn't work. So I do think that we need to, to Les' point, I think flow is a bigger issue on weekends versus top speed. We need to figure out how to deal with the flow. And as a pilot, I'd recommend getting the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department here to help with the flow on weekends in the short term because when they are here, you can actually--Highway One isn't blocked on the Ninety-two Highway One intersection because the Sheriff's Department's out there handing out tickets like candy and people are paying attention. There are ways to deal with it. I'm not saying we have to go chase after everybody and have a police state, but there are things we can do to improve the flow. I'm really, as somebody who spends a lot of time walking, biking, biking with my kids, walking with my kids around town, I'm very concerned about the width of Highway One. I think that even with ingress and egress concerns, yes, they need to be addressed, it's very dangerous to cross Highway One. Poplar Street, it's effectively four lanes wide now with the improvements that have been made. It's gone from three lanes wide to about four lanes of paved asphalt. And so, yeah, even though there's a traffic light there, it's a much longer distance to cross. And if you--so I think we need to look at those access points, how do we narrow the streets or create islands that protect pedestrians, protect bicyclists more effectively? I think across, if you look at this concept of a Town Boulevard, it's very unsafe if you're going north to south as a pedestrian or bicyclist on the Naomi Patridge Trail. There are all kinds of places where it's easy to get hit. I've seen all kinds of near hits and misses up and down Highway One. So I think we really need to focus on how do we improve the flow of the traffic, how do we get the cars off the road? How do we get more pedestrians, more bikes on there? Maybe we have easements for public transportation, electric buses, where you have a single lane with a siding dedicated to a bus that runs on a shuttle service, maybe certain high-capacity vehicles are what are allowed there, emergency access vehicles. But let's look at the highway system a different way, and how do we get cars off the road and get more public transit, more bike options, more pedestrian options, and improve the overall pedestrian and bicyclist safety? Those are the kinds of things that I'd like to see us focus on. In terms of, since we're on Town Boulevard, I'll hit my last items. Poplar Street, Kelly Street have come up, other Redondo Beach, John's Left, we haven't addressed his questions, but I think we need to look at all of those streets and look at how do you improve the flow but slow the speed of the traffic down? Narrowing the streets, maybe one way to do that. I may, you know, I think maybe it does make sense to have pedestrians and bikes and have, you know, a Class Four bike path along there, something that really narrows the streets and creates a safe way for people to get up and down the street. But I'd like to look at those designs and have, you know, maybe the policies that we should set should be, let's allow flexibility that takes into account the character of those streets. That is a very rural street historically. We have a chance right now because it's largely undeveloped on the east side of Highway One, and only about a third of the area has a sidewalk on the west side of Highway One. So you've got an opportunity to do something interesting there. And so I think having that context-sensitive design is important. Same thing for Kelly. I think there are things we can do with Kelly. You run out a sidewalk about halfway down the street, so everybody moves onto the street, it becomes a bit of a street fare. Maybe we just cut off traffic altogether, right? Maybe there are things we do that really change that approach. I like the idea of, to improve that concept of beach access, let's stop trying to put more parking on the bluff tops, let's put it in town, let's get people out of their cars, let's get them to walk. I think that's a really good approach to take. I think that's a really good approach to take. I like the idea of using the Johnson House or using other areas that could be developed or improved upon for parking in town just to remove the cars, to remove the traffic. I think that's, I think that helps, right? You gotta get, in order to improve the flow, improve our livability, especially on the weekends when we've got four times as many people here, you gotta get cars off the street. And I think that needs to be an explicit policy of getting cars off the street. So those are my comments on the Town Boulevard. I don't know if you have any other comments on Town Boulevard. On from him as fast as possible.
I have other, I have other topics that I want to get to, but let's get through Town Boulevard.
I just want to kind of continue on my theme of social pressure, but, you know, I think design goes a long ways. And the idea of as you're coming into town, you know you're in a town, you know you're in a community, you know you're going to expect to see pedestrians. So the level of signage, design, those types of, those types of improvements, I think can go, can go a long way. So, and, you know, I think just from a, I guess it's, it's an aesthetic thing, but, but it's also, I think it does kind of play into the same thing. I mean, just, you know, dare anybody to go and count the number of street signs between Kelly and Highway 92. So, I mean, the definition of sign blight for sure, but, but a really consistent, you know, sort of signage, policy and character that, you know, really gives people a sense that you are in a community, I think could go a long way to just, like I said, create that social pressure that, hey, this isn't a drag strip.
I agree with that. Les, anything else about Town Boulevard?
Yeah, I want to reiterate my first comment I made when I started, first, do no harm. And, you know, the issue as far as traffic flow, I think respectfully disagree, there's a difference between visitor traffic and everyday traffic. As I indicated, we have an increased population of Half Moon Bay in 10 years. There may be a few more people in El Granada, Moss Beach, Montero, and so on. But again, Half Moon Bay is the center because here's where 92 is. And from relatives who live north of me and other people, it just gets worse and worse every year for the people that live here to get to high school, to get downtown, and so on. And, you know, having a way in which you can get traffic on and off easier so that there's at least one flow of traffic through El Granada, Half Moon Bay, or so on, and people getting on and off can use other, other lanes. I mean, they're, they're, maybe in five years, 10 years, there will be fewer cars and so on. But it ain't going to happen soon. And, you know, the, I, again, I want to emphasize, anything you do that'll increase the time it takes for people who already live on the coast to go from north to south and south to north, I think you get really loud feedback. So I just want to emphasize that.
Chair. So I actually think we are in violent agreement about that. I think the theory here is that maybe there's a way to make the Town Boulevard work in a way that provides you with a better experience. You may not think that it's faster. If you run a clock, it might be a few seconds slower. You might find that you're happier. But, you know, I, I think that there are creative approaches to how road capacity is used. I mean, certainly in the city, there are periods where parking lanes become roadway and vice versa. So what I'm trying to say is, let's be open to hearing different ideas and experimenting. And, you know, I'm sensing that you are. You know, another topic that came up with respect to Town Boulevard, let me just toss this in, was we had a public comment that was concerned about emergency access times. And I think it's fair, you know, so I'm going to get around and get on your side of the microphone on this one, Les, and say, you know, maybe, maybe we need language that says that the things we do shouldn't make emergency access times slower. I'm not sure I want to, you know, I think that a four-lane through and through the city fundamentally changes the character of down, of our community. I think it bifurcates it in a way that you see in Pacifica that you don't see here yet. So I'm hopeful that the Town Boulevard concept may, it is changed and it's going to be different, but I'm hoping that it's actually going to be more fun than you might think.
Highway 1, I think that's a, that's a great concept. I'm not sure whether it's safe or not as Rick indicated, but no, at least there's a safety, relatively safe point. You only have to grow 40 feet rather than 80 feet and run across and hopefully get, you know, slammed by. But again, I see people crossing Highway 1 as you do, Jimmy, because of all the subdivisions that are north of Main Street. And that's, that's an issue. The other issue that I think I raise is having safe crossing areas where there are flashing lights that will, either you can press a button, they'll alert cars 100 feet, somebody wants to cross here. It's not a traffic light, but, you know, at least get them to slow down. I mean, there are places on, well, downtown San Mateo has them. There's one at, at the beach by Princeton that isn't a traffic light, but, you know, people can press it, flashes. Okay, yeah, there's somebody there to help them cross.
I'm sensing consensus here.
Ways in doing that.
No, I, I think that from a policy perspective, I think we're all trying to get to the same place. I mean, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, then one other issue that when Rick talked, I think is something that we might be able to coordinate with Caltrans or with the Highway Department is top of 92 on 35 or other places, we see signs, 20 minutes to Half Moon Bay, 15 minutes to Half Moon Bay.
Or parking spaces are full, number of parking spaces.
Parking spaces are full, you know, I mean, you know, or, you know, or, or, you know, something, two hours from here to Half Moon Bay or something like that.
How many spaces are available?
Will at least get people to turn around at certain times. I mean, having, having informational signs, that, that might be a way to subtly, you know, not, you know, obviously you can't prevent people, but be a little more subtle and saying, you know, yeah, you can come here, but it's gonna, there's no parking here. It's going to take you two hours. So if you're smart, turn around.
I, I, I'll recycle an idea of John's, maybe not in the way he intended, but he was going back to this theme of directing people to the places where we want them to go, like pointing them to historic Highway 1, which is Main Street, park here. Like, just, that's what I do. It's, I think that's, those types of concepts I think would be helpful, right? I mean, I don't need us to get overly prescriptive from a policy document perspective. We have some healthy discussion about four lanes versus two, but what I was going to get to was, when we went through this process and collected community feedback, the number one concern, number one problem from the community is traffic. And it wasn't like, little concern, it was all caps, you know, big concern, right? So we need to figure out how to address it from a planning perspective. My perspective is car diet and more pedestrian access, but like, there are other ways to help with the traffic.
So weighing in on the, on the Town Boulevard, I think we're all pretty close. So if, if, if the policy said something like, that it recognizes that Highway 1 right now is a thoroughfare, north and south, and it's a barrier to get across safely for anything, other cars or people. And what we need are solutions that improve, either maintain or improve the travel times and create mechanisms to cross the highway safely. And that's all we really need to say. We don't need to say how many lanes or where the lane, those are solutions that can come forward in a variety of different ways. And I think, it kind of works with everybody. Yeah, okay.
I think we've beat Town Boulevards to death. Should we move on? Next one. Did you have, did you want to make a comment, Jill?
I would like to make two comments, please. Thank you for your discussion. It was very helpful to us. The one little aside comment is, we see a lot of, or I see a lot of pilot programs with trash. So that could be a great little short-term experiment to see what actually works on the pack it in, pack it out kind of thing. If you wouldn't mind taking a look at page 17 in your document, the working draft document, policy number 25. It's the Town Boulevard policy and just take a moment, and I'm sure we need to revise it. And I'm going to read it again too, based on your discussion, and just want to make sure we know how to revise this.
So I think that a consistent theme that I've heard in John's comment is that, and I've heard in staff, in, you know, not in this policy, but I hear in your discussion of it, is that we're trying to reinforce the theme that we're a small town, that we're trying to capture that. And we're sort of, we're, the policy is capturing the, you know, sort of somewhat objective, if abstract, things like, is it safe? What's the speed limit? Things like that. But there's also this aesthetic that I think John was speaking to. And it may be that the policy could incorporate that, reinforce, reinforce that notion. Did I miss it? Is it in the policy someplace?
It's there, but it's very soft language.
Contextually appropriate is what you believe is contextually appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say contextually appropriate with the guiding principles. I mean, I don't know.
Contextually appropriate for a small town.
Well.
A rural coastal community.
We're, that's a real slippery slope. We're talking about, talking about design guidelines for highway stuff. I, it would be better to react to specific solutions.
Is there an aesthetic statement that, I mean, is there a guiding aesthetic principle?
Well, no, we have guiding principles at the beginning of the document, the beginning of the LCP. And I think that maybe just referencing the guiding principles explicitly here would be the right approach.
That works.
I think you can't get a more comprehensive statement around what we want.
I think that's fine. And then we'll be back with scenic and visual resources and maybe that will tap this, this little extra area. So in fact, I think I've already drafted something about that. Okay. Thank you. That's good.
Anything else you want us to cover, Jill?
Can I just re-way back on one thing for you?
Yes, please.
When I was, so this whole thing about trash, I agree with everybody about that and our programs are getting way better. What I was referring to is, like, when I was a kid, people threw stuff out of their cars and there was trash on the roads. And implementing the fine policy for littering the highway was not easy. It was, it was very controversial, very difficult to do, ended up being an expensive fine, and it's worked really well. You know, people don't do that now. And so what I'm trying to convey is that we might want to take this sort of forward step of, even though maybe people say we can't charge fines and blah, 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 maybe eventually we can. And that if people are, like you said, pack it in, pack it out, if they don't, there's a price to pay because they're not going to respond to necessarily altruistic things. And I'm kind of, that's as much as I can beat that drum.
I'm not super enthusiastic about cracking down on people when they're on the beaches, having gotten multiple tickets for walking my dog on beaches in Santa Cruz. But garbage is an issue and even a modest presence of the police on horseback, more improved signage, things like this. Just, it's, to your point of peer pressure to the community, I think policies that, policies that address those things would be, a policy that might encourage that type of approach would be helpful. Half Moon Bay Vista, we're talking about roughly connecting the high school or Highway 92 or the trail to the northern end of town near Highway 1, what some might have called Foothill Boulevard or that general area. Okay, so that's, but we're talking about a walking trail concept. All right, just wanted to make sure. So, yeah, it'd be great to have a trail on that side of town. I think the G-PAC recommendation strongly encouraged trails there or on the more eastern boundaries of the city. I think there's some historical trails worth looking at. There's a famous story about Woodrow Wilson when he was the president of Princeton and they just finished the main camp, the main quad, and they hadn't put any sidewalks in. And they asked him, well, where should we put the sidewalks? I would just leave the buildings there for a while and we'll figure out where the sidewalks should go based on where everybody's walking. If you look at a map of Half Moon Bay in Google, you can see some of the historic trails where the kids want to go. You can still see the trails that people have carved out. I think we should look at those places because there's a reason why people use them. They're convenient. And they kind of fit into what you're doing. So I think that's, it's worth looking at when we talk about this concept of an eastern trail. Where does it go? There's, I think there's some places where it would fit in. I know some of the neighbors who would have the trail go near their house will not like it, but we're looking at the overall benefit to the community. So we just, you know, we need to look at what works.
So there are, that works to a point. There's a point at which it stops working. Sometimes, you know, where we have prescriptive easement rights, for example, where the home hasn't been built, we can make something like that go as a condition of development adjacent. But sometimes the, the path is adjacent to a resource. You know, people historically walked next to creeks. But if we've developed everything up to the creek and what's left is in the creek, it's not, that's not a workable solution for the path.
I agree with you.
So the way, one way to address that would be, you know, where we can have it near the, you know, these paths should be beautiful as well as, you know, functional for walking or riding or whatever. But at some point, you know, for example, when they get adjacent to agriculture, as we saw in a recent coastal development permit discussion, or next to a riparian area, it may be that we have to take a turn away from what might be beautiful and move the trail to a place that might not be ideal and probably isn't where people were walking in the, in the old days. So this is a great example. I mean, this really speaks to that, what Jill talked about earlier in her early presentation, which is that we're going to have to go around because of the constraints on safety hazards, environmentally sensitive habitat areas. The bottom line, as we're, as we're working this, we're going to have to, we're going to have to find a way to blend those. The way our existing local coastal program does that is it has an overarching policy that says any development must meet all, it must satisfy all of the policies of this local coastal program. And historically, what's happened has been when someone wanted to push a project through, we sort of cherry picked a couple of policies and we said, well, it satisfies this one. And the findings say we satisfy that one, and it turns a blind eye to some policy that it didn't satisfy. And I think, I think we would be better served as a community, whether we're property owners or we're of public interest, if we found a way to keep that linkage a little stronger than the way it's been. And that would be one opportunity for improvement. And so, for example, I remember noticing a policy that said, we're going to build a show, we're going to look at where the, I'm paraphrasing and I apologize for not having exact language, but it said, we're, we're going to take into consideration the impact of the trail. of the trail. And my comment on that was that the Coastal Act doesn't give us the leeway to think that way. We actually have to toe the line and not impact the resource. So I bring that up as an illustration of a more general concept as we read through the policies, that we need to be sure we're not setting up policies that have an inherent conflict. And I hope that we can, we can do that. That's my only, my only real comment on this area. The policy that we've been talking about on Poplar, of maintaining sort of the traditional, you know, the way, the cultural way that Poplar is right now, I think we need to be careful about generalizing about how we do that. If we applied the same principle to Kelly, for example, there's a gully on the south side of Kelly, you know, it's, it's fairly deep adjacent to the street before you turn into the state park. Once that gets into state park land, it becomes a gully. And if we don't change that, that gully is going to attack the street. It's going to limit coastal access at a, at a whole different level. So the, the, the policy context that made sense for Poplar might need a different interpretation or wording with respect to Kelly. That was the other comment on this, in this area, for a hazard reason as opposed to an issue reason.
Just want to add a couple notes because we're looking at this coastal access and recreation section, this chapter in isolation. And remember back to land use and you're of course going to get this again, but a very strong upfront list of four general policies that I would expect to bring forward. One of them is about policy hierarchy and of course, we're not trying to set up conflicts, but they do occur and this particular policy notes that if LCLUP policies overlap or when policies in the land use plan and policies in the general plan elements overlap, on balance, the policy which is the most protective of coastal resources shall take precedence. So that is, I think, the policy Commissioner Benjamin might have been referring to in the existing document.
Actually, it is that and the Bolsachica holding, which says that we can't, if we, we can't say it's on balance because we screwed up this habitat, but there's another habitat over there and we're going to make that one really nice. That holding says we can't do that anymore.
Okay. One, another note, on, on Poplar and Kelly, one of the, let's, let's go back up to this complete street definition that we would like to work on. In terms of acknowledging character, one of the things we often like to say is, insofar as it is desirable or, you know, the, the end goal is to maintain that particular character. So I think we can provide some language that will deal with situations like the gully on Kelly.
Thank you. Okay, Brian? Anything else? On?
Got a little lost. We're talking about the, the trails.
Yes.
I like the idea of Eastside Trail. I'm sure there's lots of reasons why it can't happen, but I think it's a great idea. I think we should pay attention to why it can't happen and say it's a good idea and let's push forward if there's possible solutions and not identify what the conflicts are.
Likewise, I think we've, we've mapped out Pillar Cito's Creek Trail as a potential opportunity. I mean, I know there are a lot of reasons why that can't happen, but it would be great to take the approach of how do we make it happen and in the appropriate way, respectful environment. All right, anything else on this topic?
I was just going to, I guess, follow up on that, that sort of prompted a thought of me, but you know, as we're talking about Poplar and complete street improvements and all this sort of stuff, and then we're also talking about the Eastside Parallel Trail, you know, and a bunch of other things, they're big ticket items, right? And sort of the need to kind of prioritize and, you know, make sure that we're, you know, wisely spending our money and, and that's where I think, you know, some of the, you know, areas like Poplar where, you know, sure, you can make certain improvements up and down there if you're talking about, you know, sidewalks or that sort of thing, you know, which costs a lot of money, it'd be pick, you know, big ticket item when, you know, we could, the Eastside Parallel Trail is something that would have a lot of benefit for a lot of other people to where we could look at, so the other alternative access, you know, pedestrian accesses up and down, that could get people to the coast around the Poplar area, north and south and that sort of thing. So, so just sort of making that point, that some of these things aren't, you know, necessarily, you know, making sure that we're kind of looking at, you know, what are, what are our priorities in terms of some of these, some of these improvements?
And now you've got me riffing. We also need to, you know, we've, we have a habit of building infrastructure that we can't maintain, that we didn't plan to maintain, we don't spend on maintain and it collapses or it subsides or something. It would be nice if our policies specifically called out where we're going to do these trails, that we're requiring, you know, a plan for maintenance.
I think that that's what I was trying to get to earlier, was having a comprehensive plan for maintaining the trails and infrastructure. I think we, we sorely lack that. I strongly agree with.
Yeah, and I think we ought to add parks to that too. I mean, there's a, we've got a hint around that prior to.
Hell streets.
Any, so, let me also, that kind of raises the point, thinking outside the box, Poplar, Kelly, at least to me, there doesn't seem to be any reason why we couldn't on weekends prevent parking on the north side of Kelly, because that's where the people walk to the beach. You have bike trails that are there too that block, you know, I mean, these are kind of ways to improve access without at least having everybody up in arms on that. Some of the other comments that, you know, we've kind of talked about, getting more people into, into downtown, at least some parts of the day, close some of the streets, have it walking streets. I know during holidays and so on, you have a lot of people enjoying that. Lots of other cities, at least certain times of the year, certain days of the week, close streets to, to traffic, so you have more pedestrian, more access. So those are, I think, part of the recreation access that I think we ought to at least somehow put in there as a, as a, as a broad policy. We ought to experiment with these and see which one sticks, you know, in the future, so to speak.
So I did overlook one of my notes in the trails and it's, I called it city center trails. So if anybody else is interested in adding that language to one of these, city center, well, trails in the city, in the downtown area.
So you're suggesting either expanding or completing trails that connect to downtown? I absolutely support that. My, one of my biggest gripes is the, the trail that goes underneath Highway one that just basically dead ends over at the fish market property, you know, completing just that, what is a relatively short connection into downtown, I think would, would have a whole lot of benefits. So I think, I support that sort of concept of improving or completing any trail connections to downtown.
Hundred percent behind that. Yeah, a hundred percent behind that. It's sorely lacking. There's a poor trail system connecting downtown to the west side of Highway one and to the north and south of town.
Maybe even within the town itself.
I mean, I think, getting back to your, the paint concept, right? Paint doesn't cost a lot. Changing parking configurations doesn't usually cost a lot. There are things that can be done without a lot of infrastructure to make it, prove it, make it, make it easy. I mean, in, on paper, High, Main Street is a complete street and a bicycle access street. In reality, it's not a safe place to bike. So putting a green stripe of paint down there could make a big difference.
So I think you may have just answered my question, but I wanted to get clarification so I could, I'd like to agree, but I think of downtown as being pretty built out, you know, along Main Street or on some of the side streets. Were you thinking Main Street road diet, we add a lane for bikes or what, what does this concept look like so I get it better?
Not looking at solutions. I'm just looking at bicycling and walking around in downtown. The automobiles override all that and so we just expand the trail so that it's not just necessarily trails.
Well, I mean, existentially, I like it. I like motherhood too, but it's hard to, you know, it's hard to get behind it, a concept. I, I'd like to reserve judgment until I see what the concept is.
All right. Any other comments on this item? All right, let's, let's move on. Do you want to?
I think staff can provide some framework on the city center trail and the concept of what maybe an urban trail could be like without getting too detailed. So I'd like to talk with Commissioner Evans a little bit more about it. It would help me. Okay. Where were we? Let me just double check. Were you comfortable with or want to take on any of these topics? We wanted to work on some definitions for you. Heard one or two of you talk about protected water oriented uses. Not sure if we have consensus there.
I think we just ought to say it and just, if someone wants to do something, we can point to that and say, well, it's, it's against policy because we have a policy.
So.
I mean, you know, you, you don't know until somebody says, this is what I want to do. Say, well, no, that's terrible. Well, we have a policy that says you can't do it. So I mean, I don't think we have to be, you know, saying you can't do X, Y, and Z, but you can do A, B, and C. So I think something broad, kind of, you know, that quacks like a duck and walks like a duck and so on and we all know it's a duck, yeah.
I mean, what's, what's the concern? Is it wave runners and people having obnoxious boats? I mean, what, what is the specific concern we're trying to address here?
That's part of it. Another bit was our, our parks planning consultant would really like to know where she needs to focus on these things and just have a little more clarity and in that, we're trying to do that plan concurrently with this, it's, it's a little bit challenging. So that's all. I don't think we have to be absolutely specific and I would really very much, just like a little more input and then we can come back after we talk to our attorney.
What do other cities do for this?
I don't know. I haven't looked at every little bit, yeah. I can check.
You know, the phrase, human powered water recreation, I mean, that seems to, you know, generally capture it for me.
I mean, I think that's consistent with a lot of the feedback we've heard from the community sessions. I think, like, I don't want to create a policy that can be interpreted to encourage people using wave runners on the beach because that's.
Right.
Having to protect for those types of devices, right?
Sorry, thank you. So what I was trying to say was powered activities tend to be more intrusive and impact the recreational experience of others and activities that might be convenient on the beach like sandlot volleyball or, you know, playing soccer on the beach or having a cookout on the beach. Those are, those are wonderful, but they're not really water dependent and I don't know that I think of them as protected activities. I don't, in fact.
And just to clarify, that doesn't mean they wouldn't be allowed per se. Right, okay. I think that's helpful.
That I wouldn't say drop, you know, drop, stop everything.
Right.
Let's put in a, let's truck in some sand so we can play more sandlot volleyball.
That's fine.
Any other comments on this section? Okay, let's move on.
Anything on this?
Maybe we've covered a lot of this.
Yeah, I'll ask my questions later.
All right. I, so number six, I think we should, so, so your question was can we make this more general and not providing specificity on the number of parking spots and upward bounds on parking? I don't have any issues making it more general. I, I think my one piece of feedback would be discouraging parking, more parking west of Highway one. I would like to see policies where we park east of Highway one and so that people can enjoy the bluff tops as opposed to looking at parking and garbage cans and waste. I mean, it's a lot harder to, to bring garbage to the beach if you've got to carry it. So it's a different way of mitigating the garbage is to make people walk. So I, that'd be my only concern with lifting a cap on parking is that now we could willy-nilly start adding a lot more parking spots.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
So I had, so I made some comments about the dearth of parking for electric vehicles. Is there room in the planning commission's thinking for encouraging parking facilities for vehicles that have trouble getting here because of the under availability of charging facilities?
I do think we should have a policy for like electric vehicles. I mean, but I mean, I think, I don't know if we should set it here, but maybe we should say the city should have a policy for electric vehicles and update it because anything we put in here is going to be outdated as soon as it's approved. So, and maybe it's just something that.
It's just a form, maybe the note is, the, the concept is that we're, we're, we know that we're not doing it right now.
We need policy, we need a policy to encourage electric vehicles. I think that, that would be.
To facilitate the farmer from Fresno driving an electric vehicle and not wondering if he can get a charge out. Okay.
I mean, or either that or encourage private enterprise to come in, do something like that. I mean, why, why does the city have to?
Oh, I'm not, I didn't mean to prescribe the city had to install them. I just meant that right now, we know that that's an underserved visitor segment, you know, and instead, you know, instead of having our roadway choked with electric vehicles quietly sitting in their happy, comfortable environments, they're sitting in smog belching happy, comfortable environments.
Such as the city shall create policies to encourage public and private solutions.
Yes.
Thanks.
Would you mind looking at policy number seventy-three on page thirty? I'm going to twitch you a little bit, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I've read this before. I think it's just, just adding something in terms of you have to provide infrastructure for the electric vehicles.
Right. And I, I think it would be helpful to split it out, but I also really appreciated your criteria about citing parking lots. That, that's the kind of guideline, guideline I was looking to add to policy six. Okay. So thank you.
So could we consider, I, I don't disagree with encouraging electric cars. Would we consider, and I like the idea that the cars are parked further from the beach for most people that have to walk. Do we want to maybe help the, right now, the standards of the disabled access parking, there's a sort of a ratio that has to happen and maybe we should be looking at, if, if we're asking people to walk further to the beach, get their cars further from the beach, regardless of how the car, you know, the gas station or the electric charging station, that doesn't necessarily have to be close to the ocean, but maybe there's more disabled access ratios so that we provide for the, for the people that's difficult for them to walk.
I, I think that's a smart policy.
Yes, kind of up that ratio a little bit for the, where you get close to the ocean.
Yeah, ADA Act conformance, maybe plus some, is what you're saying.
Yeah, the ratio right now is.
Be welcoming.
Certain ratios of what's required, the percentages for the number of cars, how many have to be disabled and we maybe want to encourage that to be increased.
So there's a differentiator for Half Moon Bay, marketing chair. Value added Half Moon Bay experiences. We embrace people who are differently abled.
All right. We do. All right. We do. We're all going to be there at some point. Thank you.
I'm trying.
Yeah. I'm glad you're in the programming department. Keep you in engineering. The, I, for pilot program, so comments on this, I like the idea of pilot programs and encouraging the city explicitly to do it. And, yeah, we should be looking at how we get the California Coastal Trail committed. The one thing in the language, California Coastal Trail is not a single lane. It's a collection of trails. And so there's language that describes the California Coastal Trail. I think that would be, it's actually a network of trails is the concept. It's more than one. So I think that's just, I'll, there's a specific section where that's called out. I'll mention it. And the permit permitting, I think the, sometimes we spend more money attending meetings and going through permitting process than the actual work that we're permitting, like benches. So I think we should really have policies to streamline things like maintenance for benches and even for some of these public activities that are like goats and whatnot or public access or cleanups. We should just have something that's, doesn't, it's either a recurring, a recurring item, maybe a CDP that is just recurring and city staff can approve it so we don't have to have people come in and waste time and money on unnecessary permits. Of course there are.
So there were some really legitimate comments about, like, you know, the Coastside Land Trust, the comments from Joe about, you know, "I worry about whether we can still do our exemptions." And I don't think anybody wants to make those exemptions harder to get. But the nature of permits for development is what is, it is not who is doing the work, it's what is the project. And so a perfectly good organization like the California Conservation Corps could violate the Endangered Species Act and the Coastal Act and do unpermitted clearing without an exemption. And if we said, "Well, you're the California Conservation Corps. Anything you do is going to be fine." We do not want to do that. We can't do that, actually. And so I want to be clear that, you know, the idea of recognizing, you know, removal of trash from Pilosios Creek or picking up cigarette butts on the beach or, you know, pulling the shopping carts out of Frenchman's Creek or whatever that is. I mean, those are, those are good and worthwhile projects, and they should be rapidly exempted. But I don't, I think that the minute we say, "We don't need to know what it is you're doing," we're walking down a very slippery slope.
I would never advocate for that. And I don't think it's also, I also wouldn't advocate, "Oh, we trust you." I think those policies lead you down a slippery slope. So duly noted. I do think that, you know, having to get a coastal development permit to replace a bench...
No, that's an exemption. That should be an exemption.
Yeah, yeah.
If you, however, just for the sake of argument, if you, if the bench used to be at a spot that is now no longer on the bluff and you need to move it, and the place you want to move it is in the middle of a riparian corridor, it really isn't eligible for the exemption. You know, on the other hand, if you have a, I don't know, a shopping cart in a stream and winter's coming and it's going to capture debris and create a flood and erosion nuisance, that kind of sounds like an exemption to me. And I trust staff to make the judgment.
But if the shopping cart's creating habitat, then that might not...
Well, if it were, if it were large woody debris...
I trust staff.
But the good news is that the way the exemptions work, the exemption is published. And if somebody has an issue, they can raise the issue.
That's right.
That's why the system works well.
Right.
Thanks.
So back on the pilot projects, it's a great idea. And I'm wondering if it can't be even expanded a little bit more. You know, if we don't provide infrastructure for the people that are here and wanting to share our space, by the time we go through the two to five to 10 years to get all these changes through as regulations, it's just going to get more trampled and more cluttered. So, and that's an infrastructure kind of issue. So maybe there are, in your pilot projects, potential to do infrastructure that's not necessarily long-term permanent improvements. There's got to be other places around the world where they have really great porta-potties that are beautiful and maintained and there's maybe infrastructure solutions that could be pilot projects that are not just necessarily transportation-related, yeah.
I could not agree more with you, John. I mean, bridges that could be temporarily placed over a creek and then removed during plower season, for example. You know, there's room for creative thinking that's not just a new, heavy, you know, Corolla Industries concrete plunked down on the, yeah.
All right. You got an endorsing, a resounding endorsement of your pilot idea. So anything else you want to cover? Have we hit all the items?
I think you've hit all the items, and we really appreciate that. We can do next steps. Oh, I apologize.
I thought I was on, we, there were, you know, so equestrian is another type of access. And we know that, you know, we've had comments that the horses on the beach create a certain kind of water quality or beach sand quality problem or erode the bluff tops. We also know that where the, where the horse equestrian facility is allowed the horses to go into the creek, it creates a hazard for the horses and it creates water quality, adverse water quality impacts. And so I think we have a policy about trying to move the, or if we don't, I'm proposing a policy that suggests getting the horses to reduce the impact of the equestrian resource, the equestrian access on our coastal resources. And that would be beach, bluff, riparian areas. Does that make sense to the commission?
Ironically, in Asia, there's roads and trails that they encourage having horses and they don't allow wagons because the wagons make ruts and create drainage problems. So we've kind of got a, kind of conflicting interests here.
Let me ask the question. I presume that in the last plan, and I'm asking this as a point of information, the coastal commission, as well as our policy, had no problems allowing horses on the beach. Am I correct in that? Or are there any prohibitions that I should know about?
In 1993, LUP has kind of a range of areas where it hits on equestrian use. Some of the PUDs actually include criteria for maintaining how much horse operation is currently there. For example, the Seaport Ranch facility. At the same time, and it recognizes this is something that folks really value with respect to coastal access. At the same time, I know there's policies in that document, and I can't point right to them, that are encouraging the city's future approach with equestrian trails, that new trails be sighted on the east side of Highway One. So trying to not intensify equestrian use on the west side of the highway was how I was reading that. I'd have to go back through, but, so it kind of spanned an area about keeping what's there, but not making it more intense. There it is. Yeah. Pilot project.
So, yeah, I'm not advocating increasing or decreasing the intensity of equestrian use of the coast. I'm merely trying to reduce the adverse impacts of that equestrian.
All right, so, policy, all right.
Yeah, so as a specific example, having creeks, the horses trample through a watershed in a sensitive area where, like, that...
Yeah, if you walk, if you follow the horse trail as it goes sort of roughly adjacent to the Hernandez Bridge, it's a mess down there. And it is not conducive to water quality. It isn't... It's not that close. It's more than 500 feet.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have policies that help reduce the impact.
You were off mic, I think.
Let it be noted that Commissioner Demond agrees with Jimmy on this point.
Not often, but this is certainly one I do. Thank you.
The walls are going to come tumbling down.
All right. Okay, so Jill.
I didn't know if Commissioner Benjamin had anything else.
I think, I appreciate you letting me add that. When we're planning our access, I also wanted to note that we, since we know that there are accessory dwelling units in the works, there are, you know, second units. When we do subdivisions and when we're doing planning for the amount of land or resources that we expect to acquire for access and for parks, I want to be sure that we are planning well for recognizing that those accessory dwelling units are going to come in. So it's really just a policy that recognizes what's going to happen in the future. Because once that unit is in place, we can't get more parkland. We can't get more access compensation. That's all. Thank you for your forbearance.
All right. Planning managers' report, is that where we're at now?
We're on the verge. Okay. Next steps on this project. We will see you on August 22nd. I'm trying to get scenic and visual resources and cultural resources to you. I need the weekend. You're going to probably get those two on Monday. Coastal hazards, I'm wrapping up a few things with fire, different fire district folks. So I would like to resolve that. If I can't, I'll just leave placeholders in it so you can get going on it. And so August 22nd, you'll have quite a bit of material. I did not prep well tonight for what some homework could be to prepare. So I'll send you an email tomorrow, and it'll probably look like reading the Coastal Commission guidance document. The piece on scenic and visual resources is actually, it's short, and it's really good. And so I would encourage you to take a look at that. Anybody game for August 29th? I'm not saying we would be ready or even need to meet then, but we do have a fifth Tuesday, and I like to always ask.
I actually will note that I'm actually on vacation on the 22nd, most likely camping in Tahoe. I don't know if anybody else is not going to be here on the 22nd, though.
I will be here.
Does anybody want to meet on the 29th? So we can plow through some of it.
I believe I can meet on the 29th if it's necessary.
I don't necessarily want to, but I can. I could be here.
I would echo those comments.
That's totally fair. I would prefer that we decide on the 22nd if it's useful or not. We don't want to meet just to meet. We want to meet if you've got momentum and we need more time on these things and if it, if it looks like it will help us pace through better. And I can be clearer about that on the 22nd.
Does it make sense to give you an extra week to plan for the 29th?
I want to keep him. I want you to be there. Maybe you can call in again?
I'm not calling in from Tahoe, bro. Calling in from a work event, that's fine.
It seems...
Tahoe, not so much.
For these policy discussions, it just seems really helpful when all of us are here.
It is, but you know, I worry. I mean, it does. And I don't want to lose any of your comments. Yeah, I mean, you do have a great effect on the dialogue, but I just, I hate losing momentum. I feel like we're moving.
Well, I don't think we'd lose momentum if we're not going to meet on the 29th. I mean, there's some concern about meeting on the 29th. My question would be, could we just meet on the 29th and move? That's my question.
What, when would the, so when would the September meeting be? I'm sorry for my phone. I was just checking my calendar. So our first meeting in September is the 12th, so that gives 13 days, well, 10 days with noticing. Is that going to be, does that throw you, that doesn't kick you back too far?
No, that's, then we still have two weeks in between. We need that.
Okay, so for the record, I'll be calling in from Florida on the 12th.
Okay.
For the record, I'll be calling in from Shenzhen on the 12th.
Anybody else have an exotic place that you're calling in from?
Rousseau-Français? I don't know. Okay, yeah, okay.
All right. We can make that work. Well, it sounds like we'd prefer the 29th. Is that a planning commission directive? We're fine with that. We have an attorney available. Staff is available. I'm still going to try to get...
Thank you for accommodating.
Yeah. Oh, it's our pleasure. Okay.
All right. So planning managers, I'm going to close the public hearing item, Planning Managers' Report.
Okay. Briefly, the biggest news we have to share is that, if you haven't heard, our Community Development Director, John Doughty, is now the new Public Works Director for the City of Half Moon Bay, and that was official as of yesterday. Yes. John is away right now. He will be back to see you all. He is going to remain very involved in community development in that role as director. And I won't speak for him. He has a lot of thoughts on what he would like to do and focus on. So I think it would be good for him to share that with you. There will be an interim Community Development Director, is my understanding. We don't know who this is yet, and it is not going to be me. I don't want you to think that because I'm doing this. I'm doing your plan with you. So that's kind of the big news. Projects, we have a few things coming up at the directors' hearing on September 6th. Single-family dwelling at 301 Roosevelt Boulevard and a lot line adjustment on Redondo Beach Road. And, let's see, oh, the emergency coastal development permit is moving forward for the Ritz Carlton Piers. We would expect to be able to report details out to you at your next meeting on the 29th. We're hoping to be able to issue that the third week of August. And we're finalizing a couple of lot mergers that these things come through from time to time. One of them, though, is pertinent to work you've done. It's the Main Street Mixed Use Project, 711, 717, and 719 Main. That was the one where, that was a condition of that approval and related to the findings. There's also one on Grove. And our new attorney is going to be bringing you some bylaws, I believe, on September 12th. That is our intention. And that's it.
311 Roosevelt, that's the one that's on the corner of Roosevelt and Naples?
I think so, yeah.
So that's, that's just a Community Development Director hearing?
Yes.
Through the chair. Did the, did the beach, the state beaches get there after the fact permit for the demo? That should have been 60 days from the issuance of the demo. Or is that the Coastal Commission's bailiwick?
We are communicating with the Coastal Commission about that in that the state parks does not wish to do any development, and they've really secured the site. Coastal Commission staff is giving us guidance for how to close this out without a long-term, bigger-picture permit. So I can report out on that probably soon. We're going to have a coordination meeting with Coastal Commission staff next week.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Can I, can I get a motion then?
Why don't you do it, Jerome?
Second.
And all in favor?
All right.
Hi. Thank you.